Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the special meeting of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, November 17th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Linganfelder?
Here.
Councilmember Mello?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Could you stand, please, and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. For this special meeting, our only agenda item is the approval of Resolution Number 5317, a canvas of the November 3rd, 2020, general election. Arizona revised statutes require the governing body to canvass this type of election within six to 20 days of the election. Election materials will be available online prior to the meeting. For inspection by the council and the public, staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5317. Manager Foggan, did you want to comment on this at all?
I think if we had anybody commenting, it would be actually Annie, who has been working with the county. So, Annie, do we have anything that we wanted to add?
Madam Mayor, I would just say that even though the county has not officially canvassed their elections, the elections director has said that these are their final numbers, and we are okay to proceed with our canvass.
Okay, we are okay to proceed because question one was simply a city issue.
That is correct.
Okay, and I assume every counselor has had a chance to look at the results. So unless there's discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 5317.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, was that Counselor Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second by Vice Mayor. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes carry unanimously. And now I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes carry unanimously. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. No. Too good. All right. On to...
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If before we start the official meeting, just some protocol within the room. So as long as people stay in their seats, they're welcome to sit without their masks on. As soon as people move around, we ask that you put your mask on. We've laid this room out six feet apart. Of course, if you're more comfortable with a mask, you're welcome to do that. We will be, as people use the microphone to make comment, please do not be offended. We will be wiping down surfaces, doing our part to try to keep COVID-19 spread to a slow pace. With that, Mayor?
Thank you for that explanation, Manager Foggan. And so, good evening, everyone, again, and welcome to the regular meeting, the business meeting of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, at 5:05 PM. I don't know that we need another roll call. So I will move into the invocation, and the invocation tonight will be given by Kip Anderson of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Mr. Anderson? Is he on Zoom?
Thank you, yes. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity, and may we pray at this time. Our dear Father in heaven, we come before thee this evening at the beginning of this city council meeting, grateful, Father, for the many blessings that we enjoy as citizens of this great state, of this country, and particularly of the city of Kingman. We're thankful for those that are willing to serve, for our mayor and for the city council members. And we would ask thy blessings to be with them this evening as they ponder on issues being brought before them and as they make decisions. Might they be guided and directed through thy will? And might they make decisions that will bless the lives of the citizens of this city and this area? We pray a blessing on those that are, might be struggling, those that might be ill with the virus, with the COVID-19. We ask thy blessings to be with them, to heal and strengthen them. We pray for the first responders. Might they be blessed as they serve the people and as they provide needed comfort and medical attention? We pray for those that are serving our country. Might they also be watched and blessed over? We're grateful, again, for all that we have, for our freedoms. We pray for unity. We pray for peace. And again, we pray a blessing to be with the city council members, with the mayor, and those that, the council members, as they deliberate and as they serve. Might they be blessed and strengthened? And we give thanks and pray for these things, and do so humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I believe that a roll call is not necessary. Do we need to do the pledge again? We're good, okay. Then with that, we'll move forward into appointments. And we have one appointment to consider this evening, the Transit Advisory Commission reappointment. The terms of Transit Advisory Commission members Brent Potter and Justin Hembry will expire December 31st, 2020. Mr. Potter expressed a desire to be reappointed to a second three-year term. Mr. Hembry decided not to seek reappointment, and therefore his position will become vacant. No new applications have been received. Staff recommends reappointment of Mr. Potter. Is Mr. Potter here, or did he have a statement?
He is not here this evening, but he did provide a statement that I will share. I would like to extend my gratitude to the city of Kingman for allowing me to continue serving on the Transit Advisory Commission. I believe the work done by the commission and the service provided by CART is important to the city and its residents. Thank you, Brent Potter.
Thank you. And who is the liaison to Transit?
I am Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Watkins, would you like to?
Make a motion.
Make a motion?
I would be glad to make a motion that we accept Mr. Potter's desire or application to continue his role of service on this commission.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, to reappoint Mr. Potter to the Transit Advisory Commission. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it carries unanimously, and we give our thanks to Mr. Potter for continuing, because you're right, CART is providing invaluable service to our, members of our community. Now we'll move on to awards and recognition, and I get to hog the microphone a little bit for a while here, but it's all for good things. And the first one is we want to proclaim and recognize the 25th anniversary of the Kingman Quilters Group, several of whom are here this evening, and will be coming forward to accept this with our masks on. But for now, I will read this. It's short, but it carries a punch. "The Kingman Quilters began as a group in Kingman Community in 1995, and whereas the original quilters Karen Goudy, Fern Campbell, Patty Thorson, Teal Lestuski, and Jean Thompson met at various houses to quilt and share ideas. And whereas there are now 50 members in the Kingman Quilters Group that meet monthly at College Park Community Church, and whereas the Kingman Quilters donate their quilts to many charities, including Quilts of Valor, to honor our veterans. And whereas the Kingman Quilters welcomes new members to the group, including new quilters, offering good times and fellowship, sharing knowledge, pattern skills, tools, and fabric. Now therefore, I Jen Miles, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Kingman, Arizona, do hereby state that the Kingman City Council does congratulate the Kingman Quilters on its 25th anniversary and recognizes its impact upon not only its membership, but on the, on the community. And be it resolved further that the city council joins the citizens of the community in appreciation and celebration of the 25th anniversary of the Kingman Quilters. And we strongly encourage each of us to recognize contributions that the quilters have made and continue to make for our citizenry." Thank you. You'll come up and accept the proclamation, and we'll take a picture.
I was a very early director. Okay. I was an early director, and the pioneer ladies wanted to make a quilt, which still hangs in the museum. It's really worth seeing. So we all got involved, and that started me with quilting, and I love it. It's a wonderful hobby, and we do, I think, good for the community by having, giving out the quilts. Thank you very much.
I'm going to do a little bit out of order. I think the next one does not have a person here, the Daughters of American Revolution. They don't have a representative here, but I have met with this group in the past, and they're very dedicated to our community and our history. But they've asked that, that this proclamation be issued in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month. And so, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of the National American Indian Heritage Month, many communities are hosting celebrations as well as cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities. Now therefore, I Jen Miles, mayor of the city of Kingman, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as the National American Indian Heritage Month, and urge residents of our communities, our community and communities across the country to observe this with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed, Jen Miles." And so there's no one here to accept it, so you don't have to take a picture. We certainly do appreciate the, the contribution that this heritage has. We've had many celebrations in the past years that have been really remarkable at the museum and with our, with our Native American neighbors. So we'll make sure this gets to the Daughters of the American Revolution. And now we do have one that is in support of our small businesses. And I think that our chamber director, Becky Fosson, is here and will be coming up to receive this. "Whereas the city of Kingman, Arizona celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas 62% of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business, they said it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. Importantly, 3/4 of the U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. Whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. They believe that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And whereas consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported that the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently-owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas the city of Kingman supports our local businesses that creates, that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. Whereas since 2010, the Saturday after Thanksgiving has been designated a Small Business Saturday, a designation that has been embraced nationally. And now therefore, I Jen Miles, mayor of the city of Kingman, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand, Jen Miles." And Becky, thank you for being here and for all the contributions that the chamber is making to help our small businesses recover.
I just want to say thank you to the city. Okay. Just want to say thank you to the city of Kingman for not only the Shop Small Saturday, but for the Shop Local program. It's been very, very successful. The businesses have been very happy when we've gone in to purchase the gift cards and just remind everybody, two more weeks. So if you're out there shopping, get your receipts to the Chamber of Commerce. Anything over $20, and you can be in the drawing to win the $250 gift card basket and a $500 gift card basket after Shop Small Saturday. So don't forget to do that. Also want to thank the Kingman Main Street Group. They've been instrumental in downtown. And remind everybody, don't spend all your money on Black Friday. Save it for Shop Small Saturday.
Here, here. One final one here. Hmm. Who could this be? Our own finance department. And is Director Moline here, or who's accepting this? Oh, yes, she is. Okay. This is really a wonderful recognition. Our office has received... I want to make sure I get this right. Maybe I will. There it is. Okay. "The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2019. And our department, our finance department in Kingman, has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the financial reports. But it is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial report, reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the city of, by a government and its management. So I think there cannot be enough kudos said to our finance team and your leadership in that, Director Moline. And I have the plaque here. And I would add also City Manager Foggan for your contributions and leadership for your whole team, including the way that the, the reports have been modified in the past two years. I've made it so much easier for our citizens to really understand the budget, which is a complex budget, but it's simplified down to where it's much more absorbable. So with this, I'm going to ask maybe Manager Foggan and Director Moline, and your team.
Mayor Miles?
Yes, sir.
If I may, you know, not every finance department out there cares enough to commit voluntarily to this program, and I think that it demonstrates a certain level of commitment, which, as a citizen myself, I appreciate you doing that. So well done.
We agree. That's a happy group. Well, they, they work hard, but they have such camaraderie. Okay. We now move on to Call to the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. And we have had three ways for people to provide public comment, and that includes in-person, and tonight we will have one person who has signed up, call-ins, they could call in by telephone, or by written comments. But I understand we have no call-in or writ...
That is correct. There were no written comments or requests to speak on Zoom.
So the only one that we're going to have tonight is an in-person public comment by Stephen Robinson. And if you would come to the podium and give us your name and the city you reside, and you have three minutes.
I'm Stephen Robinson and currently reside in Golden Valley. And before I go on to my main points, I want to congratulate the city for being very diligent in their financial reporting. I hope Vice Mayor Linganfelder can motivate the county to follow your example. Unfortunately, the rest of my statements are not that positive. 21 months ago, there was a recall effort that was completed, but there had been a change in the number of signatures. Now I understand why Vice Mayor Linganfelder got involved in the process. But Mayor Miles, what I wanted to say first off, I saw with respect how hard you fought for your position on the mask mandate. It was very good. You lost, and you handled it with grace. Unfortunately, you were absent without leave when Vice Mayor Linganfelder started pressuring the former city clerk and the city attorney to change the number. The original number given to me was 410. Instead, because of the encouragement, it went to 1946, because Vice Mayor Linganfelder had encouraged them to use the 2016 election, general election, for determining the number of signatures. In fact, what had happened was, that was the incorrect number, and it wasn't me saying that. It was the Arizona Supreme Court that ruled last December, and they published the opinion on April 5th of 2020. It was Pace, or Morrissey versus the city of Payson et al. And in that, they had gone back to 2002 to determine how many signatures, general election, when in fact the Supreme Court ruled it was the first election, the August election, which was the number that Sidney Muley gave me, 410. So unfortunately, that was, had there been, the citizens ended up being disenfranchised by the decision of, of Carl Cooper as the attorney. He changed the numbers. I found the emails where he changed the numbers. So my strongest criticism is of the city attorney who changed it in violation of the state statute. He changed the number. Now I understand Vice Mayor Linganfelder trying to stop the process and get the right number. He obviously had a misunderstanding of what the correct number was. The correct number was 410. We turned in 1,058. The voters of this city were disenfranchised. And that's unfortunate, because we just had the best election in 40 years, when we had an 80, or 78% turnout in our county. And in Kingman South Precinct, we had an 84% turnout. So hopefully, we can fix some of these issues as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Okay. Next order of business?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since I was addressed or mentioned in the Call to the Public, do I have a comment?
You have that right.
I think that the speaker failed to mention the TELIS case, and if they didn't agree with the TELIS case, they obviously could have litigated, and they did not. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay. Consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is required, desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items that any council member would like to remove at this time? Okay. Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda, items A through M.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as outlined.
I'll second that.
Scott, Counselor Scott Staley, was that you?
It was.
Okay, then we have a motion, a second, to approve our consent agenda as presented. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Ayes have it carries unanimously. We'll now discuss all business, which includes our opioid litigation settlement memorandum of understanding. The city of Kingman is participating in litigation against the opioid industry along with various states, counties, and other municipalities. This is not a class action lawsuit. There have been settlement discussions that appear to be reaching fruition. The state of Arizona has crafted the One Arizona Opioid Settlement Memorandum of Understanding regarding the distribution of settlement proceeds. The state is asking the city to sign this MOU. The goal of this is 100% participation of all Arizona counties and cities. Staff recommends the city attorney sign to sign the MOU. Manager Foggan, or is Mr. Cooper here?
That would be me, Your Honor.
Oh, there you are. I see you now.
Yes, ma'am. You'll see in the agenda...
You'll see in the agenda packet that we received a, a letter from the Attorney General's Office regarding this MOU, and it's something that had been negotiated with the state and several private attorneys. One of those attorneys was from, I'm trying to remember the name, Keller Rohrbach, Rohrbach, which is the firm that's been representing the City of Kingman. This, this memorandum is understanding is used to facilitate this settlement agreement, or the settlement negotiations between the various defendants in this opioid litigation. And the idea is to try and consolidate the, the state's position, instead of having, you know, technically, there's probably over 1,000 jurisdictions between the states and other cities across the country suing these various defendants. Some of them have already declared bankruptcy, but this idea is to at least increase some of the bargaining power and increase the number of dollars that'll come back to the state. Basically how it's written, more participants in the state of Arizona that participate, the greater amount of the settlement that should be coming this way. Currently, all the counties have signed on, and now I think the push is to, to present it to the various cities and see if the cities will be signing on with this agreement. Part of this MOU basically just describes the allotment of the settlement. Basically, what you look at is about 44% of those proceeds would go to the state. The remaining 50% are supposed to be allocated to the counties. The formula is based on opioid disorder rates, number of opioid overdose deaths, the amount and potency of the opioids shipped to each community, and there's some basic census data. I believe they're using that as well. When you look at how much is going to the county, and again, we don't have a dollar amount, we're just working at percentages right now. Obviously, Maricopa and Pima County are, Pima County are receiving the greatest amount. Mojave County is the third at 4.898% of the settlement, and with the breakdown in Mojave County with 62% of that, 62.51% of that going to the county, 9.91% going to Kingman, 13.1% to Bullhead, 13.87% to Lake Havasu, and point, 0.61% to Colorado City. And again, this is a negotiation chip bargaining position. If any final settlement has to go back to these various jurisdictions to actually approve. So these numbers can change, and these are basically floors, so there's nothing to say that we won't be able to negotiate maybe a little bit of a higher rate or negotiate a different dispersment amount with the county itself. This is just kind of the quick down and dirty of this, and I'm asking that you give me permission to sign this so we can get it forwarded off to the AG's office.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Quick question. When, when the, I remember when the City of Kingman, when we decided to join the litigation effort, did all of the cities in Mojave County sign, agree to one?
No. I don't know, there's some that may be, I don't think any of the other, I don't think the other two cities actually joined in litigation, but they would be a participant in this if they decide to join in. So this will be, this will include cities that are actively litigating and cities that are not part of the litigation process.
So any city that signs on now, regardless of whether they entered the litigation earlier, will be eligible for a distribution?
Correct.
And it seemed like we had a lower part of the distribution in Mojave County. Do we really have that much lower opioid issues?
I, I would tell you, I don't know what those numbers are, and I think, like I say, it's based on these federal statistics. I think the issue was, originally, we, we entered into this, this litigation, we were trying to pull up data of actual damages that the city had received because of it, and it's a really hard thing to quantify. So I think that's why the, the negotiation strategy started to break out into using these figures that they're using. You know, there's going to be population issues, obviously. I'm, I would say I was surprised, but I'm not really surprised that Mojave County was a third in, in this allotment, but it's kind of where we're at.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
The percentages sound and feel like it's a breakdown on population.
And that's part of it, yes.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the MOU for the city attorney to sign the MOU.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Mello Keener. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Scott Staley. I have a motion, a second, to approve, have, give Mr. Cooper authority to sign the MOU. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes carry unanimously. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. New business. Request for an improvement district for the Southern Vista Track 1980, Engineering 20-0059. Staff has received a request from Ryan Swop of 3319 Southern Vista Drive for an improvement district in the Southern Vista Track 1980 subdivision. The request is generally to install curb, gutter, and sidewalks, and encompasses two blocks on Southern Vista Drive between North Central Street and Steamboat Drive. When the subdivision was created in 2005, there was a requirement to pave the streets, but no curb or sidewalk was required. In addition, there was, there was no requirement to extend sewer to serve the subdivision. All existing developments treat their sewage by individual septic system. The current zoning for the subdivision is R140, which means the lot sizes are a minimum of one acre in size. There are a total of 31 lots in the proposed district. One lot is vacant. The remaining lots have relatively new single-family homes. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we're going to have Engineer Greg Henry walk us through the process, and I believe the applicant is also present, so, Mr. Henry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Go ahead, show basically the attachments that are included on this, and thank you to the mayor for reading that, that, the summary there. Essentially, just to give the background, Mr. Swop lives at 3319 Southern Vista Drive. He has approached Engineering and Public Works Department and was asking about getting curb and sidewalk on the, on the street. So we suggested the, the process that we have in place, which is the improvement district process. Basically, an improvement district creates, allows improvements to go in and creates assessments for the, for the property owners and allows them to pay those improvements off over time. Mr. Swop has indicated, hopefully you can see my screen, I do have a copy of the email up showing that we received from Mr. Swop on September 21st. He's indicated concerns about children in the street, not having sidewalks, that there's a lot of pedestrian activity in this neighborhood, bicycles, and, and just the general narrow width of the street as, as being concerns and the reason for requesting the district. He's also mentioned a maintenance, potentially, that having a curb adjacent to the pavement would reduce maintenance of the city's street there. And as the mayor indicated, these subdivisions, well, it is one subdivision, the Southern Vista Track 1980 subdivision, it was created in two phases, essentially the first block between Central and Yaddle Pie, and then Phase B was Yaddle Pie to essentially Steamboat Drive, excuse me. And at that time, again, no curb or sidewalk was required. These are one-acre lots. No sewer was required. And as we get down into our, our general Blumen District philosophy in Resolution 4386, it talks about some of the reasons why the city might want to consider it in Blumen District, and curb and sidewalk, and sewer are definitely both on that list of, of reasons. So Mr. Swop has talked to most of the owners out there. There's 31 lots, 30 of them have homes on them. So there's just one vacant lot in this area. On the screen here now is a, is a copy of a spreadsheet that Mr. Swop provided, indicating the, the people, the addresses, and the owners that are in favor of, of having curb and sidewalk installed. And I do, I did, we did go ahead and create a map of this. Being engineers, we like maps, so on the screen now is a map with the green properties that were taken from the spreadsheet that Mr. Swop provided, showing those that were in favor. The green is essentially the ones that are in favor on this map here. Just a couple things to note, you know, Central is essentially improved, so any improvement district, we would recommend include certainly curb and gutter on Southern Vista Drive to its connection here at Steamboat Drive, and then there's this piece of Yaddle Pie Drive as well, which has no curb and sidewalk on it, and so that would be likely included, included with the district to, to place curb and sidewalk on that area as well. You can see on the north of the subdivision here is Southern Avenue. Typically, that, we would, we would not recommend installing the curb and sidewalk here with, with the improvement district. There's been some capital improvement projects identified in the past, in the past plans to, to improve Southern Avenue as a whole, essentially from Eastern Street out to, well, all the way out to Grand San Jose Parkway eventually, but it, that, improving Southern Avenue with, with, with the district here, it, in my opinion, is better done when you can improve the whole road. Next map here, I've got sort of an index map. One, I wanted to highlight the drainage easements on this map, so you can see these yellow areas. There's five drainage easements that were created with the subdivision, and the public drainage easements, they were, they were given to the city, so the city is responsible for maintaining these easements in yellow. And then you see, I've got some photos to show, and basically, the photo number is in the box, and the arrow is essentially the direction that the camera was, was looking when the photo was taken. So I'll move into, this is photo one, Southern Vista Drive, looking south, there's the drainage easement. I'm not sure if you can see my mouse on the screen, but there's some recycled asphalt that's been placed here by the city over the years to essentially minimize the erosion. The drainage is flowing towards, towards me in this picture here, it's, and so it's, has created problems with, with the edge of pavement here. And it's, you can see a utility box, so there's, and you can see the general condition of the drainage easement here. It was never really improved. They were like natural when the city, they were given to the city. Here's another photo two. This is looking west on Southern Vista Drive. You can see some erosion here. This is the drainage easement that's essentially located between Southern Vista Drive and Southern Avenue. There's been problems in this area in the past with the city having to maintain and fix erosion issues at this location here on, on Southern Vista Drive. Photo three is looking north, looking at that drainage easement, standing on Southern Vista Drive and looking at Southern Avenue up here. Again, the drainage easement was essentially a natural condition when it was given to the city. No improvements were made, and there's been some erosion, and some requests by the, by the adjacent residents to come in, have the city come in, and do something with this drainage easement. This is photo four, looking north. This is the other drainage easement, a little bit further west of the previous one that was just shown. And then this is, this is photo five. This is kind of standing up by Isidore Drive Avenue, I'm sorry, looking south, another view of the drainage easement. I showed you the view, I'm sorry, looking north, I showed you the view looking south in photo two, I believe. Here's the photo of Southern Vista Drive, standing at, standing at Yaddle Pie Avenue and looking east. You can see there's a general condition of the pavement. There are some cracks in the pavement. Every house on the block has concreted their driveway out to the edge of the pavement. That, that would be a challenge with the district because it's likely, most of these, a portion of these drives would have to be removed and replaced, so it would add some cost to the district. These drives don't need current ADA, so it's likely they'd have to come out and new sidewalk would come in, and the street would be widened probably about three or four feet on each side. So that would mean a good eight to 10 feet of these drives would have to come out and be replaced with, with the project. This is photo seven, again, standing at Yaddle Pie, but looking west this time, another kind of clear, clear view of the pavement with the cracks and general condition, the driveway's coming down, sloughing down to meet the pavement. And now, this is Southern Vista Drive, essentially kind of standing at Central, Central Street, looking to the east. Here's the Resolution 4386. This was passed by the council in 2007. It essentially established the philosophy for the city to, to, to consider and create improvement districts. I'll point to, I'm certainly not going to read this entire resolution, but I did want to point you to a couple areas here. One here, there's, there's several criteria for why the council might consider a district. The first on that list is districts that will address health, safety, and welfare-related problems, such as extending sanitary sewer system into an area experienced failures. There's been no septic failures here. These homes are all relatively new. And then, just moving on, eliminating flooding of private property. There's been some flood issues out there. And then eliminating a traffic pedestrian safety problem. So as Mr. Swop had mentioned in his September email, he has noticed, in his opinion, a traffic pedestrian safety problem there, so that, that criteria in my, in my mind would, would be something to consider for, for the district. Moving on to item, item two of the criteria, districts that will complete off-site improvements for water, sanitary sewer, street paving, curb that are in sidewalks, and drainage control within developed neighborhood areas. That most definitely fits. Three and four don't seem to fit, in my opinion. Again, this area is mostly filled in, there's only one vacant lot. Item five, I believe, does, there are districts that will complete or reconstruct improvements that will reduce the city's annual operation and maintenance costs. Again, I don't have a number for what those costs are. I know it's, it's, it's been a problematic issue, particularly the east, east side of the subdivision and, and those existing drainage easements. There's been some complaints and, and certainly erosion around the edges of pavement that the city has had to gone out and fixed on, on numerous occasions. Next paragraph I just want to point you to in this resolution is basically the one here that, that I have in purple and outline. It talks about the city council giving greater consideration to initiating improvement districts that have a strong initial support by the property owners. According to the information that Mr. Swop has provided, I believe there was 16 out of the 31, so just, just over 50%. I'm not sure if that would meet the definition of strong initial support, but it is, it is over 50%. It goes on to say here that staff will assist with determining the initial district boundary and will also assist with determining the support of the district from affected property, property owners. Letter survey will be mailed. Letter survey will be mailed, which identifies the district boundary, type of improvements, and approximate cost per building site. This is not something that staff has done at this point. We wanted to bring this to council, provide the information that we have today, and then the council determines that this district is a good idea for the city. Staff would take it from this point on and prepare some letters. We would likely prepare some sort of preliminary plan so that we could estimate the cost of the improvements and provide those to the owners. And that's essentially what are the areas that I wanted to point out in that resolution. I did want to kind of point out too, just some pros and cons for why the council may or may not wish to consider a district in this area. Obviously, you know, the pro, the number one pro would be obtaining improvements, providing ADA accessible routes through subdivision, a safe pedestrian, safer than walking in the street anyway, a safe pedestrian walkway. And certainly a pro is that these improvements are typically paid for by the residents. So there's definitely city involvement. There's definitely some city cost involved within Berman districts, but for the most part, they're paid by the owners. So in addition to the ADA, also, there's some drainage problems that can be fixed. I don't know the extent of what those improvements might be to fix the drainage, but I do, I can say the city has that on our planned capital projects. I believe in the neighborhood of a half million dollars to fix not only improvements in Southern Vista subdivision, but to the subdivisions south as well. So that's certainly a pro if we can get that fixed. It may be possible that the city is unable to fund that project upfront, that it could be, the city could participate in the district and have those costs proportioned out over time. Some of the cons, these are one acre plus lots, so the cost of the assessments are going to be generally high. There's likely, you know, sixteen and thirty-one have indicated they would be in favor. There's potentially someone out there who's not going to be happy with the assessments, with the improvements, with the progress, the dust, and construction activity that goes along with the district. District state time can take upwards of a year to two years for all the processes and procedures that have to be done through. There's a whole list of things that have to be done prior to construction even beginning. There's resolutions the council passes. So there's a time factor involved. So, you know, improvement districts do not happen overnight. And then there is the potential for risk of defaults too. Typically, when a district is formed, the owners are given the option to pay cash upfront for their assessment or finance that over time, typically a ten to fifteen year timeframe with interest. And potentially, and the city has seen it in the past, there are some people who choose not to pay those or are unable to pay those assessments for one reason or another, and therefore they default. And the lots can go back to the city at that point. This is a con, but it's relatively probably a low risk con since the value of the homes are relatively high here. These are larger than the typical average single-family home in Kingman. Most people aren't going to allow their home to get lost based on the assessment. But given the fact that they're large one acre lots, the assessments will be relatively high. So with that, I think that kind of concludes what I was going to say. Again, if council directs, staff would proceed with making a formal survey, letter, and some sort of cost associated with that and getting formal input. Typically, we would get some sort of form returned and signed, signed and returned to the city, and then we would bring that back to council on a later date. As Ron indicated, Mr. Swab is on the Zoom meeting, and he may wish to add some additional input. And so at the council's discretion, I'm happy to answer questions now or later.
Well, I have a question for you, Mr. Henry, before we move on to Mr. Swab. I'm trying to, I really hate that that was a little bit garbled for me hearing it. And you said a lot of things that were really important, but I think I heard most of it. But I want to make sure that I understand what we're being asked to approve. Because there's, one thing I did gather from all this is there are a lot of steps that need to be taken in terms of evaluation of the cost and per parcel. And there's an evaluation sheet on that resolution that we did pass before, and it's empty right now. I think you spoke to a lot of it, but are we being asked just to say move forward with the evaluation? Or are we being asked to approve the improvement district?
Mayor, thank you for that question. At this point, this is a very informal presentation to the council, just to provide the information, to answer questions. We're just asking if council would like us to send the formal surveys to determine formal support and really, I guess, answer the question of whether we should include sewer. When Mr. Swab spoke to the residents, it's my understanding that he did not talk to them about bringing sewer in. Typically, as the Resolution forty-three eighty-six indicates, that that is a reason. And I think staff would recommend, if we're going to do a district here, to include sewer. We would like, I guess, council opinion and discussion on that because we would certainly want to include cost for that sewer in our formal survey if that's the council's direction.
Okay, so if I understand, if the council approves forward movement with this project, then you will be working with the developer to, or Mr. Swab, to issue a formal survey, and you'll be gathering cost associated with the improvements, including sewer?
Yes, Your Honor, that's correct. We would send, we would actually mail the survey directly to every owner of record in this boundary here.
And so all that information would come back to city council to consider before actually approving an improvement district?
That's correct. Yeah, this is, like I said, this is very informal. Really, the first formal step for council to form a district is what's called a resolution of intention. And we're several months away from even considering that, depending on what the support would be, and then bringing that information back to the council at some point in the future.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Henry?
I would have some questions. Greg, this is for you. So the resolution that you've attached in the backup, it looks like it's from nineteen ninety-three, about twenty-seven years old. I know that we just comprehensively revised the zoning code. Are we going to do the same for stuff like this? Because if I understand this right, Dr. Swab and his neighbors, or a majority of his neighbors, are looking to do curb and sidewalk, which in my opinion would make the neighborhood look a lot more finished. And it's a really pretty neighborhood as it is. But if they want to do sidewalk and curb, you're telling me that they're going to get hit with sewer and all sorts of other stuff. Is that right?
Well, let me just clarify the resolution. So Resolution forty-three eighty-six was actually approved by the council and adopted on the sixteenth of January two thousand and seven. The one that was, and basically it replaced Resolution seventeen forty-six, which I believe is the one that you had indicated that was from nineteen ninety-three. So it was attached to, the reason that's there is because it was part of an attachment to Resolution forty-three eighty-six, the one that was approved in two thousand and seven. And I did, I didn't, I don't think I mentioned this in my discussion, but certainly the city can front the cost of the sewer and not include it as part of the district. It could be done generally at the same time as the district, as part of the city's capital improvement program, if the city council chose that was something they wanted to do. To me, I think it makes sense. And I think the intent of Resolution forty-three eighty-six, when the council approved it, was to, when these improvement districts come in, the intent is to generally bring them up to what the current subdivision standard is for today. And generally, all subdivisions that are created today have to have sewers. So. But it certainly does add an additional cost. It's not a cost that, as I indicated, that I believe Mr. Swab has discussed with the owners. But again, it could be included as part of the city's capital improvements and installed at the cost of the city, and then the city could create a payback for it and collect only when, at the time when residents connect to the city.
Yeah, I think that if Dr. Swab went in and canvassed his neighbors about sidewalks and curbs, he may get a different response if they're required to do a new sewer system. I knew I would. I mean, that doesn't seem fair to me. I think that this neighborhood went in a long time ago, and there's a lot of neighborhoods like this. And if you get hit with a sewer system, I don't know why anybody would want to try to do an improvement district. It seems really sort of onerous and expensive. It'd be, I think, better to just allow sidewalk and curb, in my opinion.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Greg, also, this question for you. Wallopai Foothills Estates? That's not on sewer system either, is it?
No, sir. The Wallopai Foothills Estates, which is the subdivision east of this area, they are currently not on sewer.
Okay. I mean, really, the sewer, once again, this is just a preliminary motion. So that could come into play. But once again, we have other subdivisions that are large lot subdivisions, and they don't have sewer. So that's really neither here nor there right now. So, anyway. Okay, thanks.
So is this preliminary resolution intended to limit the scope to curb and sidewalk as opposed to also getting costs for city sewer? So that's question one. And if it were included, would it be an either or for the survey takers? You can do all three, or you can just say yes to sidewalk and curb?
Well, I think we could, we could estimate the cost of the sewer and separate it out as a separate item for the separate yes or no pick box next to it. That could certainly be done.
What is the, what are the benefits for the city fronting the cost? I know we want to get everybody on sewer, and it would be lovely if it had been built with city sewer, but we are in a city that has so much of it on septic. And of course, that causes problems for people who are paying the sewer fees. But what is the incentive for the city to incur that cost upfront?
Well, there's really, there's not a very big incentive. Although it is the general policy of the city to get everyone on sewer, you know, every home that's currently on septic on sewer, it's likely a sewer, because the current policy now does not require connection to a sewer until there's a septic failure. And so, given the size of the lots, the general fact that the homes are fairly new, it's likely it may remain a dry sewer for many years to come. You know, I guess if there's a, the one perhaps incentive might be that if there were pavement that were failing and needed to be replaced, it would allow that sewer to go in sooner so that the pavement would not have to be disturbed later on in the future. In general, if the sidewalk and curb and gutter were to go in today and the sewer would come later, it's a little bit more difficult, certainly doable, but it's a little more difficult to get that sewer in underneath the curb and sidewalk. It involves typically tunneling under the curb and sometimes tunneling under the sidewalk, or we even replacing the sidewalk panel. So there's additional cost to get a sewer in later as a result of that. But it's likely, as I said, it's likely a sewer that would stay dry for a long time, given the size of the lots, the size of the septic fields on those lots, and the fact that the homes are fairly new.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
I can't say, I've been probably involved with six or seven improvement districts during my tenure at the city, and every one has included sewer where sewer was currently not available. That was a decision that previous councils had made to do, so.
I'm sorry, I did not, I did not hear what you said. Did you say every improvement district has included sewer?
I can say, yes, ma'am. Every one that I've been involved with, going back, I think, to nineteen ninety-five now, has included sewer where sewer is currently not available. Or installed, I should say.
But the connection doesn't have to be made until there is a septic fail?
That is the city's current policy, correct.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I think that we've had a lot of discussions about how we're going to get caught up in these neighborhoods that are missing curb sidewalks, that are missing paved streets. And I think that this particular case could be a great example for other neighborhoods where you can come forward as a group and you can improve your neighborhood, you know, through this improvement district process. I understand where Mr. Henry is coming from. We do want to add sewer wherever we can, and this is an opportunity. However, I see this as being something that's going to make it harder to get buy-in from all of the neighbors. It's going to be a much bigger cost to each home, and it's, it'll be so much easier to say no to than, you know, a lower cost to improve the curb gutter and sidewalks right now. And I also would be afraid that going forward, other neighborhoods like this would then not be interested in doing an improvement district because they're going to be afraid that it's going to cost a lot more to do that sewer at the same time. And really, what you're talking about is not as many homes on these two streets because they are much larger lots. And the only one that will have sewer is that vacant lot that is there now, and you'll just be waiting for every other one to fail. So maybe instead of the city paying upfront for that now, we just forego that here and see how well it works out to do the improvements that the neighborhood wants.
Thank you, Councilor Scott Staley. Was that a motion?
It was.
Okay, well, I think I heard the motion is to go ahead and give approval for the preliminary work to begin with staff assisting to get the surveys out and the cost associated and the evaluation completed. associated and the evaluation completed and bring that back to council. Is that, was that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
I second it.
There is a motion and a second, as described. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to Item B, new business, adoption of development agreement with KDP Manager LLC. The city has been working with KDP Manager LLC to put together a development agreement for the construction of the Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange, Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, connector roads, and supporting infrastructure. At the city council meeting, the city's general counsel and city team will review the agreement with the city council, and staff recommends approval. But before I turn this over, because this is a, such a important moment for this city to consider this agreement, and I'd like to express my appreciation for the partners that are here in the, in the audience representing KDP Manager. I'd like to express my appreciation to the city team, Manager Foggan, and everybody that's worked on it, and to members of this council, and everybody who's worked on this for some, some for months, some for many years, and the community as a whole for about 50 years, trying, working on this. And now, I think this demonstrates what can be accomplished when partners of, with different interests perhaps, but all of goodwill, share a vision, and I'm excited to hear about this agreement tonight, and I will turn it over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will echo all of that. I appreciate Bill Lenhart and his team. They're here, thank you for your support, thank you for working with us. It has been, it has been an effort, for sure, and I want to thank my team. They've been awesome as well, and that, together, I think we've come up with an agreement that I think works for the betterment of this community. And so, and I don't think that we're going to walk line by line through the agreement with the council. We're happy to answer questions, but we, we're happy to have Andrew McGuire with us, who is our general counsel, who I think are, basically is planning on walking you through the highlights. I will point out that the agreement that you have, again, apologize that you got it a little bit, a little bit late, as in 24 hours before 5:00 today, but there's a lot of moving parts, as you can appreciate, looking through the agreement and studying it. With that, there is going to be one recommended change that, depending on what the, how the council feels about the agreement, there is going to be a suggested change from the, from what you received yesterday afternoon. But with that, I will turn the time over to Andrew to walk you through the highlights. Mr. McGuire?
Thank you, Mr. Foggan, and members of the council. It's, it's a pleasure to be with you, as, as much as we can be at this point. It is, is a nice thing to bring to you this agreement at this point, because we have been talking about Rancho Santa Fe for quite a long time. The, the main highlight of this agreement is the cooperation and the cost to construct the Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange. Thanks to your state representatives, we were in the lucky position of having a budget allocation from the state in last year's budget that put $20 million aside for this traffic interchange. That $20 million is kind of the foundation of this agreement, and with the state's contribution, the developer and the city will then carry the rest of the cost. So $20 million off the top, and the rest of it's divided 50/50 between the developer and the city to pay the cost of the traffic interchange. There are also costs associated with the roadway, we call it the connector roadway in, in the agreement. There are costs associated with the drainage facilities that go along with this improvement project, and so all, in total, all of those things make up the project that we're discussing. We were quite a ways down the road on, on being able to give you an exact final number on a lot of these things, and what we discovered was that there is a better solution from the developer's perspective in terms of how the drainage is handled. And so, you'll see that there's some language that was not in some of your prior agreements that talks about a portion of this, of the cost the cities would have, city would have had for some of the regular, you know, standard flood protection items that you normally have with the road, are instead going to be offset against the cost of the developer for a much more robust, larger area drainage facility. All of these reimbursements, though, all of the costs that the, the city will be reimbursing back to the developer are all in the form of sales tax reimbursement, a portion of your, your excess taxes that you collect. And again, just like the prior agreement that you did with this, this component in it, it's only net new taxes, so there's no credit given for taxes for things that move from one place in the city to another, just like you had in your prior deal. It also lumps in construction sales tax, so you'll have a pair among that that will come along the way. But it really does put a tremendous onus on the developer to develop a lot of property in order to come close to being reimbursed for their infrastructure out there. So it really does put incentive in the developer's side and puts the city in a position of participating in that over time as funds come in. Two other pieces of this that you will have as we get further down the road, the city is also going to have a cash contribution to this, and Ron and Tina will be the ones to describe what that all entails. But there's also a piece that, we'll be back to talk about excise tax bonds. That, we can't come back to you and discuss it yet because we're going to need, at the point where we are to prove up, as it were, the, the city's side of the money, including the developer's side of the money, to the state in order to get $20 million from the state release, requires some pretty solid proof that those things are done, including a letter of credit from the developer that won't be able to be given to the city until many months from now, until all of the design work is done, or in particular for the drainage. So you'll see in the agreement that we've built the contemplation of that letter of, of credit into what we're doing. Now, more, if, if the, if the design were done, we were ready to go today, that would be a requirement of the approval tonight, but it just doesn't work that way in this deal. The dominoes have to fall in line, and so this will be the first one. The next one will be sometime down the road after the drainage facilities are done, we'll get the letter of credit, we'll get the state on board, get the state's money into the agreement or into the project as well, and then it'll all roll forward from there. So there's, there's a fair amount that needs to occur for the project to get off the ground. It puts the onus on all, all the parties to, to, you know, grabbing more in row, but the agreement as it's currently set up, we think protects the city to the extent that it can in this kind of a deal, and gives plenty of runway for the development to actually succeed. The change to the agreement that Mr. Foggan had mentioned is in the very last paragraph on, for the last section of the agreement, it's Section 14.26, and this is a termination provision that we felt was very important going into the uncertainty of an appropriation from the state that hasn't yet been allocated. And so the trigger devices here are if the, the state takes back the money, sweeps money back, or if we get to the, the termination date of that allocation from last year's budget, which is June 30 of 2024, that will trigger an automatic termination of the agreement after a period of time in which the city and the developer can get together and decide how long you want to extend the agreement. And the reason that we wanted to have this period of time after this is because right now, it's really hard for us to be able to tell you with any kind of certainty at all that the circumstances will be at that point. But when you get to that point, we drafted in 60 days for everybody to figure out what to do next. The developer would prefer that to be 180 days, and we can live with that. We think 180 days is still a reasonable period of time, but the agreement has a 25-year term, and if the $20 million goes away and never, and doesn't look to be coming back, the city has funds obligated here, capital expenditure funds obligated here, that you wouldn't want to tie up for that period of time if the state's money weren't in the game, as it were. And, and so, that's the, the change that Mr. Foggan had mentioned, that in 14.26, we would be changing what is currently a 60-day date to 180 days. And then the only other outstanding piece of the agreement that has yet to be an outstanding piece is, is we will be attaching the informed letter of credit to the agreement before it's executed. Everybody will take a look at it. We're using a, a form that was done for a development deal that we, we previously represented one of our clients, so it'll be fairly standard, but the final form obviously won't come from the bank actually issues it. And then the other outstanding item that's yet to be finished is Exhibit G. You'll notice is missing from this agreement because it is in preliminary form. And so, rather than give you a preliminary form that contains a lot of things that we don't yet know the final answers to, the parties agreed that we would have Exhibit G be a two, to be agreed upon, later add-on, as soon as the drainage comes to a point where we can all look at it and say, yes, that's, that's what we're talking about, and everybody agrees. In any event, the city's contribution to that is capital $3.5 million. So the city's risk factor in the Exhibit G improvements is capital $3.5 million. It's not going to change based upon whatever that exhibit reveals, but it's going to take time for them to go through the process of paying their engineers, and frankly, at an expedited rate, to get to the end of that, so before we can say yes to that agreement, yes to that exhibit agreement. But otherwise, that is the highest level, the way we can describe it. It's very similar in form to what you approved at the other proposed traffic interchange. We'd be happy to answer any questions right now.
Just one correction, Mayor. So in a conversation with developer today, with Bill Lenhart, the, there was, has been a back and forth on that termination clause, and it's, there's been a couple of numbers used, 30 days, 60 days, 180 days. The developer has asked that the city make that 12 months, and so ultimately, that seemed acceptable, and so that termination clause, that would give us plenty of time, the city and the developer, to work out any negotiations necessary to see if the, or the agreement needed to be extended or canceled in that time period. So not 180, but 12 months.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. So, does this impact the schedule for bids or? That, well, that's what just occurred to me. Okay. Hello, Mr. Lenhart.
Hello, Mayor.
Welcome. Welcome. That's so good to see you.
Likewise.
I, we want to hear from you, or prior to hearing from you, I just wonder if there are any other questions for Manager Foggan on that, on the change to 12 months? Or at all, or any questions? Oh, okay. Please, go ahead, Councilor.
So, Manager Foggan, you said that the staff, you recommend the year is okay?
Yeah, I did not see any problem with, with the 12 months.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to comment on Andrew McGuire's comment about the state's $20 million contribution, and I want to let you know that about, at 9:30 this morning, I spoke with Representative Cobb, who we worked very closely with through the legislative process to attain that $20 million. She is, again, going to be Appropriations Chair in the Arizona House for the next two years, which we're very grateful for that. And according to her, the state right now is about $400 million up from where they thought they would be. She's not worried about the $20 million being swept in any time soon, and she's actually going to give us an email to that effect, which I will send to everybody once I receive it. Thank you.
Does that delay or extension to 12 months impact the financing expectations in terms of acquiring the $20 million from the state?
So, so it doesn't impact the $20 million, or it doesn't impact the project at all. What the, what this section, this termination section does is it basically says, if for any reason the $20 million goes away, that's a huge hole in the project. And really, what this 12 months does is it allows the city and the developer to figure out how to plug that hole, or to then, or to determine how long to wait to plug the hole. And as Andrew has pointed out, with, without that clause, this agreement would stay in place for years and years. The city would, would remain committed to having to have money in place or get money in place for the project. And so, that's, that's what that whole discussion revolves around, is just forcing, it really forces the developer and the city to come back to the table and, and figure out what the go-forward plan is. But as I pointed out to Bill, as I've talked to Andrew, as Vice Mayor just pointed out, if the $20 million stays in place, I think we're down the path, we're, we're certainly down the path a long ways, this, that section becomes moot.
Okay.
As we move forward.
Sounds good. Sounds very good. Thank you. Well, again, welcome, Mr. Lenhart, and thank you for being here. Thank you and your team for working with us so well over a long period of time.
Long time.
For your commitment to Kingman and our growth and our, and the betterment of our city. So with that, I'm, I'm going to turn it over. If you have some comments you'd like to make?
I do.
Please go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Miles, and the same to you and.
Bill, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Please, the microphone a little bit more.
All righty. Got it. We're glad to be here today, not just for this, but it's my understanding that this is the last meeting of this council, and I want to recognize this council for all the work that they've done, not just on our project, but looking back at the accomplishments that came with this council and this staff is impressive. And they're, using Rancho Santa Fe as an example, how long has that been on the capital improvement plan? 30 years?
Since 1971, I think it was.
1971. And this is actually not the first development agreement this city has entered into for this. We're going to get it done this time, and much to the, as a result of the efforts of this council and staff. The, the concern with the, the 12 months, discussion on the 12 months to plug a hole, should we have one, during the course of the last 30 years, but more so, our pursuit, which we've been pursuing this for, working together for, I'm going to say, three years, we were campaigning across the state, the ADOT meetings, trying to get them to support our project without success. We've applied for tire grants, multiple methods of trying to capitalize this project, and many failed, but we have one that works. And if something should happen, and we lose the state's funding, it's just another barrier that we'll overcome, and I'm certain that we will. I don't think it's going to happen, but having the 12 months to cure any mishap with the state's funds is, I think, important, and I appreciate that. with the state's funds is, I think, important. And I appreciate that staff is supporting us on that. Otherwise, in addition to staff and council, I want to thank the legacy families that have participated in this project. And just to name a few, Lee Bruno, Mr. McCormick, the Schrider family, the Shuffler family, the Reeds, Mathers, Rika, Doug Angle, and many more, that we couldn't have done it without them, with them all leaning in with their support and in some cases with their land. I also want to thank my team, who, I couldn't have done this without them. My partner, William Pleas, developer, my attorney, Tom DeVore, Carly Mossman, our, our architect, the architect of our master plan, Kathy Hicks, our government liaison, and of course, John Timko, who I met in these chambers about three years ago. At that time, John Timko was acting as a volunteer for this project. So he was committed to this project before he ever aligned himself with Sunbelt. And I would say that a lot of the members of council were also committed to this project before Sunbelt. And as other councils were, but this is the council that made it happen. And I'm grateful to you all for that. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Would, would anyone like to make a comment or question, Mr. Lindhart?
No. Um, no, I, we've got this thing about wrapped up and it's had so many obstacles and so many challenges to overcome over years. And uh, it took a whole lot of people to get to this point. And, and this is a really big deal. If this is approved and this goes forward tonight, uh, I think that we turn a new, a new page and, and get into a new chapter of Kingman's success on the East Bench, um, in our industrial park, in our airport, and all the activity that's going to be happening um around the Rancho neighborhood when Louise is connected. I mean, really the entire East Bench, you know, it, it's going to propel this community as far as industry and jobs and commercial activity, retail activity, industrial, residential, all of it over the next forty, fifty years. So it's, it's a really big deal. And there's a lot of people that didn't think it would get done. So, um, I, I'm also very thankful to this council and to staff and to you, Bill, um, the partners and everybody that contributed. It's excellent. And let's not forget Regina Cobb. And absolutely, Representative Regina Cobb, who um got that twenty million with us. And uh, she's protecting it for us. So, uh, the only other thing I'd say is, um, to Manager Foggan, this is my last business meeting um on my term. And I was hoping that um you would be able to hand out my token of appreciation to everybody here. I went and got shirts for everybody just to, um, I felt that this was such a big deal for the City of Kingman, the largest capital improvement project this, this city's ever really done. And I felt that it should be commemorated in some way. So, um, if you would make sure that everybody got those, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
And I'd like to add John Hanson and Kama to this list.
Thank you very much for that, yeah.
Because, um, and all the trap, traipsing around the state and all those meetings here, there, and yonder, uh, he was valiant in his efforts to get there and provide a voice for manufacturing and their support too.
Great spokesman.
He was a great spokesman. It's been a pleasure working with everyone, um, truly. And so, he couldn't be here tonight, but he was very thrilled to know that this was on tonight's agenda. Okay, um.
Mayor Miles?
Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead.
Can I just add my two cents here? You know, for a long time, we've known how much this would mean to our community. There are so many positives. Uh, personally, I'm most excited about the jobs that this will bring to Kingman. Our future, it just was upgraded, or it's about to be upgraded, I should say. I'm not going to count my chickens before they hatch, but a lot is about to happen here and this project has gone on um for over fifty years now. And so here we are, and this is a great day. It's been a wild ride, a lot of ups and downs, but it's really been a lesson in tenacity. And I just want to thank everybody for hanging in there and, and for believing in our city and, and for working so hard to bring about this change that will increase our, our prosperity in the future, increase jobs. It's going to do so much for us. I, I just can't stand up. And so, thank you, everybody. I'm really looking forward to this.
Thank you, Councilor Scott Staley. Anyone else? Any more comments? Thank you. Well, given no more comments, uh, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, starting with Vice Mayor Lingensfelder.
We, Mayor, we actually need a motion.
Oh, gosh, no.
Madam Mayor, I.
I'm going to ask Vice Mayor, I think you should make a motion.
I would be very glad to make a motion. Motion to approve the development agreement with KDP Manager LLC.
With an extension?
With the added change, the extension uh in the mentioned clause to twelve months. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second that.
I think, I think Councilor Mello Keener got in there first. So, we have a motion and a second, and I put the cart a little bit before that horse. But I, I apologize, but let's go ahead. And I'd like a roll call vote, starting with, alphabetically with Vice Mayor Lingensfelder.
Vice Mayor Lingensfelder?
Yes.
Councilmember Mello?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Yes.
Councilmember Watkins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries unanimously.
Manag, Manager Foggan, before they leave, would you get them their shirts, please? Thank you.
And then we'll all have them at groundbreaking. Thank you. Well, that's, that is um, it's a red letter night for Kingman. Okay, I don't even want to move on, but we're going to, to annexation. One that um, we've, I asked that they come back, and here it is. Proposed annexation of the land release at the Kingman Industrial Park. At the October sixth, twenty twenty council meeting, staff presented a report on the proposed annexation of the eighteen hundred thirteen acre land release area at the Kingman Industrial Park. At the conclusion of the presentation, council requested the report be brought back to council for further discussion and possible action to move forward with the annexation of one thousand eight hundred thirteen acres of land release area at the Kingman Industrial Park. Council staff recommends council not move forward. Manager Foggan?
Sorry, yes. Um, it's, that doesn't happen very often, and I, I apologize for that. So I've got to figure out what's happening with that team. Annie's got my back though, so thank you, Miss Annie. Sorry. All right. Um, so as we presented um this on October sixth, we have had a change, and you just approved a change. And so we're not going to spend a lot of time walking you back through the numbers and the information we provided. That would, that would seem silly. But in the agreement that you just approved, you expanded the air, um, you, you basically approved an area of, um, why am I drawing a blank? You approved an area that will include the eighteen hundred acres as potential. If you annex it into the city, it will then qualify for helping repay the developers' costs on um the Rancho Santa Fe agreement. And so it changes the numbers that we presented to you at the October sixth meeting. And so I've asked Tina to just quickly remind you of where that, where we were in the presentation and just show you the difference between the numbers that we showed at that meeting and what the development agreement will have, the effects that the development agreement will have on the, the revenues and expenditures for the eighteen hundred acres. Because out of fairness and an effort to be transparent, the development agreement would change what the city will make in, uh, and what we will collect and what we will pay out uh to the developer as part of the agreement, which is awesome, uh, but it does affect the numbers. So with that, uh, Miss Tina, will you uh just walk us through that, please?
I will. Let's see. Um, well, let me try that again. Do you see the, do you see the screen?
We see the screen, but we do not see it in presentation form.
Okay, let me, let me stop and try again.
You got to love Zoom.
Oh, I'm just not competent enough at it, that's all. So, how about now?
Still see the PowerPoint in its raw form.
Okay, there we go. All right. So, do you? Do you, well, I show that it looks like it's still in its raw form.
It is. Yep.
Yeah. Maybe I just need to come in there, huh? Let's see. Hmm.
Just put it in presentation form and then share screen?
Yeah, I, I did do that, but it's uh, just doesn't like that for some reason.
Help is on the way.
Thank goodness.
Technical difficulties, sorry.
Andrew Foggan, while we're, while we're waiting.
Yes.
Does this presentation include um the burden of all the other development that's going to be happening in the project area as well?
Uh, it includes.
Not just, not just the industrial park, because there's obviously going to be a lot more that develops in the project area.
Yeah, it's, it's subject to what we looked at originally.
So it does not include anything that would happen once Louise is connected, the industrial, or anything that happens in the East Bench?
So it includes, we did our best to just, to take into account that services would be provided to those developing areas that were part of Sunbelt Development and other areas that will develop. So the full burden was never loaded onto the eighteen hundred acres. So it was spread, I think, as fairly as we possibly could across that entire East Bench and what the eighteen hundred acres would affect on those services. Oh, Annie is now Tina. Success.
Okay, I think we're probably good now. Annie knows what she's doing, so. Um, okay, so, uh, as Mr. Foggan stated, I, we're not going to cover all of the slides. We really want to focus just on the revised numbers. I did throw a couple of slides in here just so that you had it as reference as you were reviewing uh the agenda items. And as Mr. Foggan stated, on the area characteristics, the only change um to what was presented on October sixth is that now the, if the property is annexed out at Phase Two at the airport, then it would be included in the benefited area and reimbursement, uh, the taxes collected in that area would be subject to reimbursement to the developer. Development assumptions did not change either. So moving into the revenues that are impacted, really the types of revenues that are impacted will not change based on that development agreement uh being approved this evening. However, uh, the net revenues will. So as we stated, fifty percent of the construction sales tax and fifty percent of the commercial leasing tax would now be eligible for reimbursement to the developer. When we presented our original revenue impacts to you in October, we went out fifteen years. And we know that the reimbursement period uh is, or the effective date of the agreement, I'm sorry, the term of the agreement is for twenty-five years with the developer. So when we looked at our revenue uh impact with the development agreement approved, we said that over the course of the next fifteen years, or fifteen years upon annexation and development of that area, fifty percent of the construction sales taxes and fifty percent of the commercial leasing taxes would be reimbursed to the developer. And you'll see that over the course of that fifteen-year period, there is a difference of about five point five million dollars in what we originally shared with you versus what tonight's numbers are. So our total operating fund revenue increase was over or close to thirteen million dollars, or just over thirteen million dollars in October. Now it's at about seven point eight million dollars with the approval of the development agreement. Uh, the expenditures that were impacted did not change. The development agreement did not have an impact or effect on any of the expenditures. And so our total expenditures remained the same, uh, with our total operating fund expenditures over the fifteen-year period of about twenty-one point five million dollars. And so our overall fiscal impact, taking into consideration the change for our operating funds, would now be a deficiency really of thirteen point six million dollars, whereas before, I believe it was about eight million dollars, or just over, uh, just over eight million dollars deficit. And so we wanted to be sure that as this item was discussed this evening, that we did share uh those new numbers with the council. Uh, Mr. Foggan, is that all that you really wanted me to share from the presentation this evening? Or did you want me to go into more detail about the assumptions that were used?
Well, I think we've covered those. I just, uh, again, um, there is a, there's a timeline associated with it that we included in the packet just so, just as reference. Just wanted to point that out. Uh, the other piece um that we wanted, that, I don't know if you heard Tina or not, but I just reiterate, Vice Mayor Lingensfelder had asked, when we looked at the eighteen hundred acres, did we consider the, the development of the East Bench on impacts at, for the services provided? And I had responded that we, we had done that to the best of our ability. The, I will point out that the big-ticket item within the eighteen hundred acres that adds the most cost to this is the roads. And no matter what happens on the East Bench, the roads that uh land inside the eighteen hundred acres are the roads and they have to be maintained. So, um, you know, obviously this analysis isn't exact science. The assumptions, we, I think, as I pointed out in our original um presentation, where we tried to be as conservative and accurate as possible. Perhaps um underestimating revenues a little bit, um, but trying to get it right. And um really tried our best to factor in what the cost of um the infra, infrastructure and services would be for the eighteen hundred acres. So, that's, that's the only difference from our October sixth meeting. We just wanted you to know that.
Yeah. If I can just comment, um, add an additional comment on Vice Mayor's question, or I guess an additional response, really. Um, Vice Mayor, we, um, as Mr. Foggan said, we, we did our best to take into consideration that the interchange and those connector roads would be constructed um already. And so in our public safety, for instance, we did not include the construction of Fire Station Five or what that particular station was going to include. We did not include an additional beat for patrol, uh, for our police department. So those types of, or additional planners or examiners or inspectors for that area. We really tried to focus on just the expenses that would be required for us to, uh, that would be required if we did annex that area. be required if we did annex that area. Thank you.
Mayor Miles?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
If I may have a follow-up question. So if I look on the expenditures page, under general fund expenditures, community development, fire, police, internal services, it's about $16,789,000. Let's say that the Phase 2 land is not annexed. In 15 years, which is the time period you're talking about, aren't you gonna have development outside of the annexed area? I mean, if it just, if the Phase 2 didn't get annexed, you're still gonna have some development occurring in the East Bench in 15 years. Are you not gonna have those expenses anyways?
So there will be increased expenses because of, I'm sorry, Mr. Foggan, I thought you were gonna...
You're good, go ahead.
Go ahead. There will, there will definitely be increased expenses because of that, but those were not included in this, in this, uh, particular, um, analysis, because this is above and beyond what we, what we know, uh, will be necessary for the East Bench to develop.
Got it. And, and this is directed to Manager Foggan. To cover those new expenses in 15 years when the East Bench is developing, how are those new expenses expected to be covered, in your opinion?
Well, we'll do it just as we did in the analysis. We will use new growth to help add a half of position, add a full-time position. So it will, it will be spread over time, just like our 15-year analysis is. And, um, you know, we're, we're gonna be sharing half the cost, or half the sales tax generated, uh, with the developer to pay our portion of Rancho Santa Fe. So there, there'll be definitely some challenges, um, as we develop. I, again, we've tried our, our, our best to share that cost. You know, we didn't, as Ms. Tina pointed out, we did not just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna need a full two planners and three inspectors for 1,800 acres. We took that additional 18 and tried to, our best to apply it evenly across the East Bench so that that's, you know, we didn't say, we're gonna build a brand-new fire station and equip it and put all the employees in it just for the 1,800 acres. I think that's, uh, I think that's important to note.
Sure. No, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the analysis. It is helpful. Personally, I just feel, um, when you look at maybe the Butler, New Kingman area, um, the council back then and subsequent councils between then and now, um, have had these same discussions that we're having right now. And we've seen how that's played out. And I still feel really strongly that if we don't get in front of this and we don't annex this now while there's no development, if you wait to see it develop and then try to annex it, it's never gonna happen. You're gonna end up with Kingman New Butler 2.0. And so, uh, I think now is the time, and you have 15 years to figure out how to deal with it with everything else that's gonna go on out there.
Yeah. Well, and I would say that this property is currently zoned, heavy industrial, and the city has done a number of these, um, looks at annexation. You were absolutely right. Uh, the, the city had looked, it had been suggested early or late 1990s or early 2000s that the city was missing an opportunity and needed to annex, uh, the, the, New Butler, the, I think that's, they'd looked at annexing New Butler as, uh, as an opportunity to increase revenue. And a similar study was done, uh, analysis, and the analysis showed a really large deficit in, in that effort as well. So it has been done and, and similar situations have shown it. I, I agree with you that we have to, we have to be guarded. But in, on this 1,800 acres, it's, it's zoned and owned, it's currently owned by the city, and it's zoned heavy industrial or industrial. And having that, I don't believe that's gonna change. What I do, and what we did talk about in October 6th, is making sure that we're guarding against or preparing for, maybe that's a more positive way, that we're, that we're preparing and taking in sections outside the city that, that makes sense and, um, for the community's growth. And so, uh, again, I will, I will say that this is an analysis that we've done, we've tried to be as fair as we possibly can. And, um, on the policy side, uh, we, we obviously capitulate to the council to make the final decision, so.
Manager Foggan, um, now, it's true that this, this is really the land, the Phase 2 land, basically, of the airport and industrial park that we have to get the release on by FAA.
Correct.
The interchange itself and the property, the development that goes on there is not what's at issue here.
That's correct.
Because that, this is strictly the industrial park expansion.
Yep.
So I did have a question because of some issues that have arisen lately about use of funds.
Yes.
At the Airport and Industrial Park. And I just, uh, want to ask and clarify whether there is any issue associated with income or revenue generated from sale or lease of these properties in Phase 2.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, the, the money generated from sales is not obviously part of this analysis because it doesn't come to the city. That property that's sold in the 1,800 acres has to go and be spent on airport projects and operations. Uh, it's, it's been center of conversation for, for the last few months, as you recall.
So that is already factored in?
Yes.
Okay. But, but if the expenditures, though, that you are bringing forward tonight, which are different than the one that's in our packet, are increased. Did I hear that correctly?
No, they're not increased. The expenditures stayed the same. The only difference is the revenue numbers changed because you would be sharing the sales tax revenue generated on the 1,800 acres with the development agreement. So that's, that's the change in numbers.
Ah, well, okay. So that, I, that would certainly impact the bottom line. Okay, uh, any other questions?
I do have a, just a few questions.
Sure, Councilman Wade.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to sort of preface it by just saying that, you know, I've always been a proponent of, um, annexation to a certain degree. I think, um, you know, especially when it come, when, in terms of, you know, the low-hanging fruit communities that, you know, don't cost any additional, you know, city services that are, you know, sort of on the boundaries, you know, so we can sort of take some of those state-shared revenues and use them for, you know, our general budget. But, um, this is a, I, I think this is a little bit different just because, you know, one, it's far out there and it's, it's, it's not close by. You mentioned some of the, you talked about the deficiency that it, um, that the city estimates that it's $13.6 million over the course of 15 years. Is that correct? And that's total, including roads, services provided by fire and police?
Correct.
And all the other factors that you considered?
Correct.
So, um, one of the questions I had, based on the information provided regarding the streets, is, is the, the backup materials suggest that there are eight miles of roadway within this area that's being proposed to be annexed, correct?
That is an assumption.
Okay, so that would include proposed roads, not just, not existing?
There's no, there's no existing roads now.
Okay.
Zero.
If that area were to be annexed, I mean, obviously there are roads in, within the industrial park.
Correct.
Would those, those would be included in the eight, uh, the eight miles of roadway that is proposed?
No. It's only the new 1,800 acres.
Okay. And then, um, also in the streets section, it talks about, um, the, the life cycle of a, of a road is generally 25 years. And it suggests that the current roads, the industrial park road segments, um, appear to be at the 15-year mark. Is that correct?
So what happens is you do an averaging of the road age, and based on the type of traffic that it's on, you will adjust that 25 years up or down. These roads will be heavy traffic, heavy truck traffic, and so the, the, the life of these roads are gonna be lessened, and the amount of maintenance required to take care of them is going to be, if, if we want them to be good over time, will have to be increased. So the, these roads, this is much different than a subdivision, as an example, where the heaviest vehicle you have on a subdivision road is a, is a waste, solid waste truck, right, a garbage truck. So, uh, yeah, that, that has been factored, factored in, um, to, to these numbers.
Uh, Mr. Foggan, can, can I elaborate a little bit more on that particular question by Councilman Wade?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, so that is a really great question or a great observation, and I'm, I'm actually really glad that you pointed that out because I failed to mention that as we were reviewing, um, the fiscal impact. So again, typical lane mile lifecycle is 25 years. Well, we're only going out 15 years, and those are really the less costly, um, maintenance and repairs of, of a lane mile. And Rob, please chime in if I'm getting any of this wrong or using terminology that I shouldn't use. But, um, as we go to 20 years of a lane mile and 25 years of a lane mile, that's when the costs to actually rehab that road are very, very expensive. So that, those numbers are not being shown here because we only did go out 15 years. And so that 25 or $24 million number, Councilman, that's in the report, that is an accurate number. It's just not being relayed here because we only went out 15 years. So if we were to look at the true cost of the life cycle of the lane miles out at the airport or out at that, the Phase 2, it's going to be much higher.
Thank you. And then, um...
And I guess I will just say that Tina said that much better than I could, so I will refer to her.
Do we know...
Not Jack. Jack would have said it differently.
Do we know how much of the eight miles proposed would require, you know, the, obviously with the bigger trucks, you need a denser, you know, concrete or whatever. I'm, I'm not a road person, but, um, whatever materials they use...
Usually asphalt.
Asphalt.
Cost concrete, it works.
Sure, asphalt, that makes more sense. Um, but do we know how much of the proposed eight miles would require the denser asphalt or the, or the more expensive, you know, materials for roads?
Well, I will tell you that, um, in development of this, of this 1,800 acres, the effort that, that we would make to develop the property would be to develop to the standard, if it's left in the county, it would be, we would develop to the county standards of their roads. And if it came into the city, we would develop, obviously, we would develop to the standard of the city roads. And, um, it's, the general practice is three inches of asphalt, um, with the proper compaction. Roads really only as good as the base that it sits on. And, but we would, we would build it to this, these roads to the standards required to ensure that maintenance could be done and done effectively, and that we were trying our darndest to not have to replace roads.
Well, I think that, um, Vice Mayor Lingenfelter makes some good, some good arguments. I think that, you know, we wanna make sure that we maintain some form of, you know, maintenance or, or supervision on certain areas associated with Kingman. I think it's, you know, at times, it can be, it doesn't sit right when we have stuff like, uh, Kingman High School that doesn't even, you know, fall within this, you know, the, the boundaries of, of Kingman City, um, you know, property out in the air, in the industrial park that doesn't fall within there. But, you know, I don't know if that's sufficient to overcome the, the, the financial burden that we would take on over 15 years, um, if we were to annex that portion. I know that in years past, we've had councils who, you know, I, I know the one council, and correct me if I'm wrong, perhaps I don't know the, the history of the city as well as maybe someone else in this room, but, um, you know, a council in the past took on, um, Andy Devine, which seems, you know, when you look back on it, it seems almost, uh, you know, short-sighted by taking on the financial burden of that stretch of Route 66 for who knows whatever reason, just to maintain it. You know, over the years that we've been responsible for the, the, that road, who knows how many hundreds of thousands or even maybe millions of dollars, you know, of maintenance we've had to, to add just to that stretch. So it's, it's very kinda, you know, it's kinda scary to me to, to think about the issues that come along and the, and the, the financial burden that would, we would assume over the course of 15 years, when we struggle right now just to maintain the roads that we do have. Every time I think about, um, the, the roads presentation that has been presented to us several times, it just makes me cringe because we, you know, we still are unable to maintain the, the roads to the degree that we should, that would be most cost-effective for the city. So that's my concern, is just the long-term overall financial burden when compared with the, um, the value or the benefit that we would get from, from annexing that, that portion. I know, um, you know, in the short term, there may be, you know, construction or impact fees or things like that that we might gain in the short term, but to hope that there's another revenue stream to make up the deficiency between now and 15 years from now when we're down $13.6 million, it, it just seems, uh, too risky.
Thank you, Councilman Wade. You know, uh, Manager Foggan, I appreciate the time you spent this afternoon discussing this with me. I think, uh, Councilman Wade hit one of the nails on the head, truly. I know last time I, I very cavalierly said, well, this council or another council is going to have to solve the road preservation issue, and we can turn those numbers around by a solution, uh, that can be made. But as I see these numbers, and I think about the history of the city, and I think about the fact that the lack of property tax is such a growth inhibitor for annexation. It is just, uh, it's almost like it was intended to keep us in this boundary because you can't expand. And, um, and I would like to think that this council or another council will, we must find some solution to our pavement preservation for our city streets. There's no doubt. But I hate to bet on it, um, with a debt incurment. I'm, I'm really conflicted. I've always said I want to annex, it's, I really believe we need to annex, um, when it makes sense. But the road issue, and, and, and we're moving into a period of time that there's just no support for many things. And I'm even, I don't know if we're even going to get impact fees. I'm hoping so. We need those as a city. Uh, so I'm a little bit, now I'm conflicted about adding this burden to the city, even though I truly know that the day may come I rue that decision. But, um, that's what I'm thinking. Any other comments?
Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I just have, I just wanna add a few things. First, um, when I look at this, the slide that has the cost of the police and the fire, I wanna bring up a concern that I have here, is that if the city isn't incurring this cost, then we're talking about NAC Fed and the Sheriff's Office.
then we're talking about NAC Fed and the Sheriff's Office, and I'm wondering how exactly NAC Fed is going to find the $8.5 million to properly cover that area. And then the police, and then the sheriff taking on this responsibility, it really probably needs a substation and then, you know, its own officers in that area. So without us having a conversation with either one of those two, we're just hoping that they cover it, and if they don't because of the intergovernmental agreements, then we really are still going to be going on calls to that area for both police and fire, and that's something that we should think about, that that cost will probably still be there anyway in some form. On your comments about the property tax, I agree. We don't know that we would be able to get a property tax approved, however, this does change the conversation. Manager Foggan did bring up a point, the last time we discussed this, maybe Tina, you might have too, sorry, it's a little bit of a blur, but if we had a property tax, this would make sense because these large warehouses would pay so much more based on their square footage, and really, the citizens, the residences could pay a very small amount, and then the rest of that revenue is covered by the warehouses. That's a, that's a pretty great selling point, but again, it's not guaranteed. So if this doesn't move forward tonight, I want to make sure we put a pin in it so that every time we're talking about potential new revenue, we look at this and say, okay, well, if we can annex, then we could have a much lower rate of tax on property if, if the citizens approve that. And then my, the final thing I just wanted to build up, to bring up is I still think it's important, if we can, to have these, these new industrial buildings built under city building standards instead of county because there is a difference, and we, we do want to make sure that the industrial park is top-notch, that it looks good, that it attracts new businesses, and that it's maintained well, but obviously, all of that costs money. So I would love to see this move forward, but maybe it just needs to have a pin in it until, you know, we can get that property tax there, and, and maybe that would sway the citizens because we really do need to diversify our revenue. We need, we cannot rely solely on sales tax, we know that, and so maybe this is a way to really bring that conversation back about property tax. That's it.
Those are excellent points. Do you have any comments, Manager Foggan?
I totally agree that it, it does change the, the conversation about property tax. I would say that, that the property tax and the, what it would generate for the county will, will provide them plenty of money to provide services because they have property tax. So I think that, that worry, Councilor Staley, is, is addressed in the fact that the county has property tax. As far as the building standards go, we still own the property and require, can require aesthetics any way we want them to look, and as far as the building code is concerned, the county follows the same building code standards. So I can tell you that that would not be a worry per se, but it really does make, I think, a strong argument for the community to have a property tax. Property tax on, on homes could be small. We have what we know as a jewel in, in the industrial park, and it, it's, any, any community with property tax would give their eye teeth to have what we have. It's, the problem is we don't have property tax in which to glean from it, so, but I totally agree with, with Councilor Staley about it.
I do too, and that property tax could support services there and probably beyond and helping the city in many ways. So that might be, that, that might be the pin we need to put in this. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Miles. Another question for Manager Foggan. I know that your economic development staff did a report on the economic and fiscal impact of our Kingman Airport and Industrial Park, and I know that there's about 70 companies out there. Do you remember how many employees and what percentage of Kingman's workforce is out there?
You know, a percentage...
It's over 20% of Kingman's total employment is out there. And I can tell you that as a former economic development director, Kingman is competing against West Jordan, Utah, St. George, Casa Grande, Henderson, Vegas. Every elected official out there says, I care a lot about economic development, but what companies watch is your actions. And, and if there's any logical, common sense place to spend limited funds, it's in taking care of your employment centers. And we know that that is already an employment center, with the doubling of it, it's going to be an even bigger employment center, and you got to make sure that the roads are taken care of. You have to make sure that it's a place that companies that have site selection choices want to come to because it's nice and it's maintained. And over the last four years and even before that, Kingman has been hanging its hat to get roads out there incorporated into the county road maintenance system. It takes three votes, and for whatever reason, it's always been a challenge to get roads adopted into the county road maintenance system in Phase One since I've been involved in this. It's not going to get any easier in Phase Two. So that's one thing. You're always going to be battling to get your roads improved out there and adopted into the county road maintenance system if that's your plan, and you may not be successful, and that's going to affect your economic development prospects. That goes for landscaping, that goes for all sorts of different things. You know, I'm of the mind that we take care of our employment centers, and if the private sector out there is doing well, then the government will get its sales tax dollars, and then the, the government will do well on, on the private sector's coattails. But I feel like we're not giving this enough emphasis to say, we're not making this a priority, we're not going to, there's some unknowns, but we're going to make sure, we're going to commit, because when you look at the, the development standards between the city and the county, the cities are much more comprehensive, I think, than the counties are. Again, the roads, it's a gamble. And that sends a message to the private sector that's looking to maybe put plants here, distribution centers. So I think it should move forward today just to send a message economic development-wise that we're serious, we're here to grow, we're going to, we're going to have a best-in-class industrial park, and the rest is going to, it's all going to get figured out.
Manager Foggan, if we build roads, or roads are built that meet the county standards, do they automatically take them into their maintenance?
So I think the difference, and it's, it's a little bit confusing for everybody, is that Phase One of the industrial park developed as, I will say, as a private development where roads were built to connect businesses, and there were only a few roads that actually the airport could spend money on and could maintain, and that was Airline Drive, Airport Drive?
Flight Line.
Flight Line, yes, and then, of course, the main entrance road. And then the rest of the roads were all done privately. I think as we move forward, what, there's two, two things that we know, is if we develop the Phase Two in, in the appropriate way where we go through industrial subdivision process and we build, and the roads are developed and built to county standards, that it would fall into just the general development of the county. It wouldn't be a question of taking the roads. It would be going through the county process and having the roads part of the county infrastructure, just like when the county approves a subdivision or any kind of development in the county, unless they're, that development does not dedicate the roads to the county and want to take care of them themselves, they become part of the county infrastructure, much like it happens inside the city limits. The other piece that I want to make sure and remind everybody is that if, in fact, we wanted to take care of the roads in the 1,800 acres and we wanted the industries that were there to take care of them, the road specials, a special district can occur in the, in the county area where it cannot occur within the city limits. So there is a mechanism in which to take care of those, and it is through the process of a special improvement district that can maintain roads over time with the contribution of the people or the businesses inside that 1,800 acres.
Thank you. I have one more question. Given where we're at with the development agreement we did this evening, with our master plan at the airport, with the voter approval to sell land, and with the expectation that the land will be released next year, what's the timeframe that you see for the council to consider annexation of this before that we have actual development in place that would not want to participate?
Yeah, I, I don't know what that answer is.
Where's your crystal ball?
Yeah, I get the crystal ball. Well, you know, the land...
Where's the minimum?
Obviously, we're, the minimum is going to be May or thereabouts because the land, we know the land release through the FAA and the schedule that they've, that we're working under is to have the land released by May. We don't have, luckily, thank you voters, we don't have to wait for voter approval to sell large chunks after that point, but to be able to move forward with any kind of sale of the property or really, you know, I guess we can make infrastructure improvements to our own property, that wouldn't, I don't necessarily think that would be wise, but, you know, there's a big planning process that, that needs to go forward to make sure that we get the right businesses in the right places and that we've got chunks of property in which to sell that makes sense. There's a rail system that needs to be put through the property as well, but before one piece of property can be sold and developed in any way, we've got to get through the FAA release process, and that's May of 2021 or thereabouts.
Thank you. That doesn't give us time to go to the voters with anything, but it's a good thought. Try to use this as an influence for, for a way to take care of our...
Well, you could have a special election that's required for property tax that has to be in, on a May election, so you actually do have time. I don't know if you could, if you could do enough information share...
If we could educate the public.
Right. But, yeah, property tax does have to land on a May election.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I can't see the Zoom, the expenditures are still up there.
Here, I'll, I'll stop sharing.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, we're still there, I, okay. So no other comments, so I guess I would entertain a motion for, let's see, what are we calling this? Regarding the annexation or proceeding on the annexation process for the Kingman Industrial I would entertain a motion regarding proceeding or not proceeding on the Kingman, the further development process, or the annexation process for the Kingman Industrial Park.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we do not move forward on annexation of the Kingman Industrial Park at this time.
Thank you, Councilor Nelson. Is there a second?
I second that.
There is a motion and a second to not move forward at this time. I will, I'll add that to the annexation process for the, for the Phase Two of the Industrial Park. I'd like to have a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Waite this time and going the other way.
Councilmember Waite?
Yes.
Councilmember Watkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Linginfeldter?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, that can, oh, no, yeah, that concludes our business for this evening, and now we're going to move on to department reports, and our first one is the 2021 State Legislative Preview, and I think we have Mr. Tom Dorn here, and just one moment.
We need to get Tom's presentation up, so, there we are.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Tom, really concentrate on talking into the microphone.
There you go.
Have to talk right into it.
I'm short myself. Okay, I'm not that tall. What was that? Okay, I'll just lean into it. Mayor Miles, members of the council, thank Tom Dorn, Dorn Policy Group, along with my colleague Cole Libera, and we're proud to be here this evening. I know it's been a long discussion already and that, and there's another one to follow it. So, but if I may, before I get started, I do just want to congratulate all of you on, on what you've accomplished today and moving forward with your dream of the industrial park, and I know you've all been very involved in it, and I, I do want to acknowledge you, Vice Mayor Linginfeldter, the passion that you've had for this since I first met you, and I know we've had many conversations, and you've showed up at like the Rural Transportation Summit and other things just to move this project forward, and I know many have worked on it, including the mayor, but I think you need a special recognition for at least my observation of your hard work on this, so congratulations, especially on your last meeting here. So, we'll be brief, we'll go as fast, how mu, how much time do you want? We can talk forever about politics.
Not, not forever.
Shall we take a poll?
Like five minutes, 10, max? Okay, I'll go fast, you know, I'll, I like to talk, and Cole likes to tell jokes and things, so we'll just keep it to the business.
You have come from...
We'll keep it to the business.
So we appreciate it.
Okay, where's the, right here? Oh, the arrows. That was political science, wait, okay, there we go. To the right. I can use the clicker, right? There we go. That's our firm, nothing's changed. We have added B. Rockland on the right, and she works really hard with us down at the Capitol on your issues. The House of Representatives, the more things change, the more they stay the same. After millions and millions and millions and millions and mil, or maybe I shouldn't say millions, thousands of dollars spent by both parties to defend and to take over, this is what we got, the same makeup, 31-29 is the composition, and the leadership remains the same in the, in the House. And also, as you know, Representative Cobb retains her position, and, and one of the things I was looking on, for on my phone was the Economic Strengths Project Fund, which is 287282. That's monies that the Department of Transportation allocates for economic development, roadways, for roadways that have an economic development impact. So with Representative Cobb, maybe, you know, as the approach chair, maybe she can beef up that Economic Strengths Project Fund for projects such as this, because it's tailor-made for exactly what you're talking about at Rancho Santa Fe, for roads. Changes to the House, there, as I said, the Democrats really worked hard, and actually, to be honest, everyone was expecting the Democrats to take the House. We were all planning on it, and it's like, oh my gosh, we need to do that, to do that, and make sure that we got it covered, and, and then here, this is what happened, and what happened was a... And what happened was a, a safe Democratic seat in, in, it's actually southwestern Arizona, not southeastern. But Joel John, it was a single shot Republican, then he, he, and Charlene Fernandez, the minority leader, who was pursuing being speaker, her, her seatmate lost. But Representative Fernandez did everything she could to help her seatmate, however. So it was an unexpected, it's always interesting when people are ready for, running for leadership, they're planning on, they either don't get elected. And I've seen that happen many times over the years. And then Anthony Kern, who was the Rules Committee Chairman, if you recall, he wanted to be Speaker and he ended up the Rules Chairman and the, he stopped a lot of bills from moving forward as Rules Chair. He lost. They single shot, single shotted a Democrat, a teacher in his district in Northwest Phoenix, Peoria area, so. House leadership, there you go. The entire, this district is probably one of the most powerful districts in the state of Arizona of the 30 legislative districts. We now have Mr. Biassucci, who I always like to introduce him and tell people that his, his mother was pregnant with him during my Spanish class at Lake Havens High School. So I'm now lobbying him. His, his, his mom was my Spanish teacher and.
We got it. Move on.
Yeah, his, yeah, his mom. So anyway, however, if I mess that up, however I said it. Anyway, then Mesa, you still have the same leadership team, but Leo is, Mr. Biassucci is now in majority. So when those discussions about the state budget are happening, you've got Senator Borelli, you have Representative Cobb, and you've got Representative Biassucci around the big table, yet over in the cage or up in the governor's office negotiating the budget. So that is fantastic for the city of Kingman. I'll switch it over, let Cole talk about the Senate, some of the ballot propositions.
Mayor, council, thank you guys so much. I promise I won't tell any jokes and I will get us out of here as fast as possible. So 1614, that means we had one change in the Senate. I'll go back for you really quick, just so you can see the graphic. There was one seat lost and I think it was LD 28, which is Arcadia, Central Phoenix, a very contested race between Kate Brophy McGee and Christine Marsh. That was the same race that took place in 2018 and Kate Brophy McGee won. But this time, the opposite happened and Christine Marsh won, narrows the gap in the Senate to 1614. It was 1713, but Republicans still hold majority control. Obviously, they control all of the committees too, so not much of a change. That's the race that I just mentioned. Senate leadership, we have President Karen Fan again, Majority Leader Rick Gray again, and then hometown Sonny Borelli. Then Minority Leader in the House is Rebecca Rios, Assistant Minority Leader is Lupe Contreras, and the Whip is Martine Cazada. They're all from the Phoenix area. Next, I know we're going to talk more about Prop 207 and recreational marijuana, but this is just a little graphic on the vote total percentage. And then this is an explanation, I'm not going to read it to you guys because I'm sure you've seen it and I'm sure we will go over it after this. Prop 208, the Invest in Education Act barely passed. Similar proposition was done in 2016. That did not pass. And in 2018, there was a big Red for Ed movement down at the state Capitol. I'm sure you guys were aware of that. This one, I'll go into a little more detail, but it adds a 3.5% surcharge if you have income over $250,000 for a single person, $500,000 if you are married. So the business community was not a fan of this. And the chambers and other business groups went to stop this because it does affect small business owners who have S Corps or LLCs and their taxes go through the business into their income. They have said that on the other side, this will raise $860 million towards education. It should be noted that in order to get that money, you have to apply for grants. So 100%, I believe it's 100%, maybe a little less, is grant funded. So I can speak more about that if you guys have any questions, but I will keep going and I'll let Tom take on the future issues.
Another thing on that Prop 108, if I could add, is there's already, I mean 208, you have legislators that are already talking about how can we do some business tax reform to offset the impact on that category of taxpayer that would be impacted. As you've know, we, it kind of moved us in that corporate category, in that category from like 37th in the country to number 11. So as we talk about economic development, we're doing some things here that are hurting us. But the flip side of that is some people would advocate that it's, it's good for more money for education, even if it's not directly into the baseline of the budget for the classroom. Future issues, real quickly, liability protections, which should have been done before they, everybody went away, but on COVID, so that's going to be dealt with. Economic recovery, some of the things I just talked about, maybe some other tax reforms. The governor's consistently cut taxes in every year of his administration, so I'm sure he'll continue to do something in some category. There is going to be an effort by some legislators, probably led by now Senator Kelly Townsend, to limit the executive authority of, of a governor in a crisis. So we'll see where that goes. Ultimately, the governor has to sign them, so I don't know if that, it's going to happen regardless if it's a Republican or a Democrat governor, they're not going to give away their own authority. And Senate President Karen Fan has talked about the 60-plus bills that were sitting on her desk, waiting to be transmitted to the governor. That's her plan and her desire. However, it is a different legislature, so we'll see what happens, even though the numbers are similar. Water policy, we all know about that. We're going to be talking about that all the time. Affordable housing has emerged as a big issue too, especially in the metro areas. I don't know how it is in the city of Kingman as far as housing availability and affordability, but rents in the metro Phoenix and Tucson areas have gone through the roof. Policing reforms, you may see some things to that end with the Democrats. They had some big plans, but I don't know if those eventually get out of committee. And also, maybe they'll restate some current things. We'll see what happens. And then infrastructure is going to be a huge issue now that the election's over. The transportation world has been kind of waiting for, for the election to be done because with regard to Maricopa County, they have to pass, the legislature has to allow them to go out to a vote for their extension of their half-cent sales tax. But this is where the rural legislators can leverage it because the rural legislators, you know, if there's not a, you know, led by Representative David Cook and, and, and the delegation here, they want money for transportation and what we're talking about here. So in order to get those 31 votes for Maricopa County to get their tax, the Rural Caucus is going to be leveraging that. So that'll be happening. Also, the fire district issue that we've dealt with before, we're planning to bring that back. I mean, that's what we, we, planning to work on. As you know, Representative Cobb introduced that. And hopefully we'll get Mr. Borelli and Mr. Biassucci on board this year to also help with that. But it is a, it's not just the city of Kingman that you're hearing it. As we mentioned, La Paz County was another county that was interested in that. How do we deal with the PSPRS issues and, and funding when our hands are tied and we have communities that don't want to raise taxes or they feel that they're fire districts and everybody's already at this level? And then how are we going to get that revenue for, for their retirement commitments? So that is, it's, it's not just Kingman, it's not just, it's starting to percolate more and more. And I think kudos to the city of Kingman for having the courage to go forward and put something like that out there. And little by little, I think you're going to see this come to fruition over time. Short-term rentals, that too is going to be a big issue. And, and that was Cole's joke, but I asked him to put something cute up and he put that. But anyway, be happy to answer any questions?
Mayor Miles, I would have one.
Okay.
So before the whole COVID thing happened this year, Governor Ducey had committed to some broadband investment along the entire stretch of Interstate 40. Where does that stand now in your opinion?
Yeah. Madam Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, that issue is, is still out there. It is going, I mean, I don't know specifically about the I-40 corridor, but it's, they're talking about it statewide. And, and I know like the, the county legislative summit, the League of Cities, they were both talking about it. In the, you know, I'm on the Board of the Arizona Chamber and I, I hear them talking about it, the big companies, and how that's something that's being put in many legislative agendas of major business organizations. And so it, it will, it's, it needs to come back, especially now with the emergence of telemedicine as part of our daily life. Online learning is, is becoming a civil rights issue in a way now with tribal lands or rural communities not having access to education in these times. So it, it is front and center. We probably should have had that on there. But you're absolutely right. Thank you for bringing that up.
Tom, I just wanted to mention that last Friday I was, attended the Greater Mary's, Greater Arizona Mayors Association, GAMA. And water issues, of course, we're interested in and have supported include opposition to the transfer of water from the Colorado River to central Arizona. And I know you're very interested in that as we are. And I just wanted to mention that Tri-City, of course, we're putting together a letter of opposition as a Tri-City Council. We've also already sent a letter from the Colorado River Mayors Association. The city, we did a resolution, we're all getting on board. And so this was a really good one to, to have, but GAMA really did not see that, that that was something they wanted to have on the agenda at this point because there are different opinions about this depending on what part of the state you're in. So that, that one didn't manifest. But we do have the Colorado River Mayors and also Tri-City will be coming forth with that. So I know that will continue to be an important advocacy for protection of our river water.
Mayor Miles, members of the council, 100% agree. We have, you've been very outspoken with regard to the mayors and on the October 13th letter, the Mayor Nichols from Yuma, you were on that. And now you're doing the Tri-City one. And, and there, there's a real effort to, to bring in others to understand that, you know, they're coming for you now. They may come for, they're coming for us now, they may come for you later. And it's interesting, tomorrow, the Arizona Chamber is having a, a, a hearing, I mean, a, a virtual meeting where people are going to, the advocates for the transfers are going to make a presentation. But we were all very quick to be involved in the Arizona Chamber and, and your Kingman Bulldog, Patrick Cunningham, was very quick to make sure that, he, you know, he, he beat me to the punch. I was going to call Glenn Hammer and, and Patrick was already on it. So, so that's, you know, there'll be some dissenting opinions. And the Arizona Chamber and the business community is not going to be taking a position on it. Similar to the League, it's like you just don't get into the crossfire and it will be what, but I must say that, and this goes back to your delegation, we're well positioned. You know, the, I mean, Regina Cobb holds, holds the purse strings and David, as does David Gowan from Sierra Vista, you know, they, there's Cochise County, they, they need their water and they don't want it to be transferred away from them either. So it, it'll be interesting to see what happens. It's going to be quite a battle.
Yes, really. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we could just have Tom maybe talk about the $32 that's being sunset.
The registration fee that is being sunsetted?
Yeah, and if there's any.
How, how we're going to pay for DPS now?
Well, just if there's any word on whether there'll be a look at transportation funding this year, which we've had our fingers crossed at least for the last three years.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Foggan. Yes, actually, I was in a meeting today with Senate Transportation, David Livingston and, and the new House Transportation Chairman, Frank Carroll of Sun City West. And it was, we were discussing that, the actual possible legislation. And there's discussions about, well, first of all, the $32 fee is going away. And it's unfortunate because the transportation world worked very hard to find a way to get some revenue. You know, when Governor Ducey first came in, one of the first things he said is, no new taxes, I'm not going to pass any taxes. So, okay, what are you going to do? We got a fee, there's this fee, and if we can get, stop the sweep of DPS, and you all know this, that's, that's a step in the right direction. But then when the budget was tight last year and a couple senators said, I'm not on the budget if you don't repeal that, then here we are. So that is going away, so only pay, don't do the two-year registration when you renew, do a one. And there's talk about, you know, go, this is where Maricopa County, that, you all have to pay attention to the halves, the, every 20 years, Maricopa County has to extend their half-cent sales tax for transportation. And it's not just about them. It's, as I already indicated, the Rural Caucus has the authority with a 3129 and a 1614 split, if rural senators and rural House members say, I'm not going to pass that and allow you, Maricopa County and your 60% population to continue to tax yourselves for your freeways unless we get something out here in the other 14 counties. And that's the leverage that the, the Rural Caucus has over this Maricopa County issue. And it has to be approved at either the 2022 or the November 24 general election because it terminates on December 31, 24. So that's the big play on transportation funding for the next four years to replace, hopefully with some new revenue, the $32 that we lost.
You know, I remember going down and I saw Supervisor Bishop down there and I, was it Livingston Committee, Transportation Committee, House Transportation Committee? We testified about the need for transportation funding. And I think that they were just holding those hearings to keep building their case. So something is going to break loose sooner or later.
Yes, and, and Madam Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor and council members, yes, that thankfully, you know, with, when you had Noel Campbell from Prescott as the Transportation Chair, it was his idea to bring in people from every county and Supervisor Bishop, I believe, spoke on behalf of Mojave County and talk about the need statewide. And he was always calling out the governor, come on, support some transportation funding. But he's since retired. But the, the chairs, you know, Sun City West and then Tyler Pace of Mesa, so you have a West Side in Metro Phoenix, state of Maricopa Chairman, but you do have TJ Shope from Pinal County is the Vice Chair of Transportation. But we do have, remember, the power delegation that Mojave County has. So.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Water and transportation.
Water and transportation?
And PSPRS. And broadband and taxes, quite a bit.
Well, thank you. And, and thank you for your representation, both of you of us, so well down in Phoenix.
Well, thank you. We just also want to compliment Mr. Foggan and Colleen. They're, they're fantastic with regard to keeping on top of us and making sure that your priorities are being met.
Representative, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And now you can sit and listen to one that you probably know well enough to give the pres, are you giving the presentation?
No, actually Carl's going to cover this.
Oh, okay. We are going to have a department report on municipal rules regarding recreational marijuana from Mr. Cooper.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll probably, I'll give you a little bit of a background before we get to the, the few parts that we have some decision-making that we'll be doing at the next council meeting. But as you're aware, obviously, the, the proposition passed, the state will be canvassing that election on the 30th. The, the proposition will go into effect once the, the governor has issued his proclamation, which would probably go shortly, early December, I would guess. With that, the Department of Health Safety will begin accepting applications from four marijuana establishments by January 19. And then they must issue licenses within 60 days of that. The first thing, I want to make sure that it's clear, is it doesn't restrict the right of employers to make, to maintain drug and alcohol-free workplace policies or restrict workplace policies of marijuana used by their employees. workplace policies of marijuana use by their employees or prospective employees. It does not allow driving, flying, boating while impaired in the slightest degree with marijuana. It does not allow the consumption of marijuana or marijuana product, products while driving, operating, riding in the passenger seat or compartment of an operating vehicle, boat, vessel, aircraft, or other vehicle used for transportation. It does not allow for the use, sale, or transfer to anybody under the age of 21. It does not allow anybody to smoke marijuana in a public space or a public place, an open space or a public place. And the, the smoke part is kind of key here because there's an agey opinion out there that vaping doesn't mean smoking because smoking has to be the, the flammable combustion of the product and vaping doesn't do that. So there's going to be some, maybe some discussion or some changes that may stop the, that'll address the vaping issue and as well as the consuming, because you can consume products. Public places, as it says, it's banning in public places, which would be airports, banks, bars, the common areas of apartment buildings, condominiums or other multifamily housing facilities, educational facilities, entertainment venues, healthcare, hotel, motel, common areas, kind of the list goes on, some retail, restaurants, open spaces, public parks, public sidewalks, walkways, or pedestrian thoroughfares. Now, the things it does allow, allows anybody over 21 to possess, consume, purchase, transport, process, or manufacture marijuana that's less than one ounce or five grams that are concentrated. Anybody that's 21 years of older can grow up to six marijuana plants at their primary residence with no more than 12 at any residence, which meaning if you have two adults living there. Those, if you're growing marijuana, it needs to be enclosed, an enclosed area not visible from public view. The violations of any of these rules or statutes that are coming into place kind of vary from just an educational effort, a minor petty offense, which is only a fine, all the way up to misdemeanors, which could include some jail time. So currently, we do allow medical marijuana dispensaries in the city limits. And that does allow cultivation for that particular dispensary. We allow them in our C3 zoning, I-1 and I-2. There are some zoning restrictions for the medical marijuana. It has to be 500 feet from other medical marijuana dispensaries, 500 feet from residentially zoned properties, and 2,500 feet from preschools, kindergartens, elementary, secondary, high schools, places of worship, public parks, mental health facilities, substance abuse rehabilitation centers, or public community centers. So the distinction is there's a nonprofit medical marijuana dispensary, that's already been in existence under prior proposition. And like I say, we have that already. This new proposition allows for the marijuana establishment, and that's the recreational portion, so they can sell it as a retail product. Then there's what's called a dual license, which would be an establishment that has both, or a facility that has both, is a medical marijuana dispensary and a marijuana establishment. So it'd be both medical and, I use the word recreational, but retail, I guess is the best word for it. And then there's the last facility, which is a marijuana testing facility. And that's basically an entity that analyzes the potency of marijuana and tests for harmful, harmful contaminants. And there's a handful of those in the, the state currently. And what I, my understanding is they're starting to ramp up their operations to obviously deal with the influx of probably the testing requirements that are going to be happening. Part of this proposition requires that we treat the marijuana establishment, the recreational part, the same as we treat the medical dispensary part. So we can't do anything any different. With that, the minimum that we can do in, I guess, I don't want to use the word stopping this, but the minimum allowance that we would do would be a dual license, meaning that you can have, we can say there can be no separate recreational establishments, but we would allow a dual license, meaning we'd have a marijuana establishment with a marijuana dispensary. We can ban the testing facilities. And there's another thing that'll be coming up before too long, which will be marijuana deliveries. Part of the proposition does allow for marijuana deliveries, but they're not going to be able to start that right away because they have to get some rules sorted out. But I would suggest that we would probably at this point ban those as well. So I guess basically my recommendation is to draft the ordinance that allows for the dual license, because we already have a dispensary here in the city limits, ban the separate marijuana establishment, ban the marijuana testing facility, and ban marijuana deliveries for now. I would suspect what we might want to do is reevaluate this in the future. Once the rules have been promulgated, it gives a better understanding of what's going on and as well as we're right in the middle of, excuse me, we're actually in the process of finishing up our zoning changes. So we're going to have to weave some of this into that. And it's just kind of inopportune time right now for this kind of be hitting us at this point. But hopefully, we'll get everything sorted out. And my suggestion, though, I'd like to say, as we evaluate how things are working, as this starts coming up off the ground and starts developing, and it may be addressed the situation in, in the future. One thing I do want to add, and I saw it in the slide up there, was the state gets to add a 16% TPT rate. They specifically did not allow cities to change, to charge anything other than what our standard TPT rate is. So it would fall under our, our basic retail TPT. With the state, there's a, a number of places where that, that tax, or that revenue generated is going to be funneled throughout this proposition to various educational situations, law enforcement, some of the court, public safety. There's a number of different places that, that those funds are going to be going to. I think I saw even including HRF. So we'll see kind of how that plays out. But my plan is at the next council meeting, I'll have an ordinance that will address this. And unless I see anything that you guys want me to change, the plan is to allow for the dual license and then ban the testing facilities and the deliveries at this point. Questions?
Are there any questions from Mr. Cooper?
Mayor Miles, I would have one question.
Yes, sir.
It's kind of a broad question, Carl, and I won't be around, but I, I'm just curious. Is the city of Kingman able to prohibit these types of recreational marijuana facilities in the city limits of, or, excuse me, the downtown, in the, in the Kingman downtown?
Well, yeah, well, depending on the zoning, and I'm not sure exactly what all our zoning is downtown, but it's, we have it allowed in C3, I-1, and I-2. But because of some of the things in the downtown area with that spacing requirement between schools, places of worship, and I don't think we have a public community center per se, but I think there, there's a good chance that, or good possibility, it won't be in the downtown area. But I'd have to, to look at the zoning map to make sure.
So I can answer that question. Carl pointed out, there, I talked to planning about this, very question, can marijuana establishments be in the downtown? Currently, the zoning doesn't allow them to be in the downtown, so we've already successfully kept them out. So as Carl pointed out, C3 and light industrial and heavy industrial is really the only place that these can land. And if we take the, the step, the next step that Carl's suggesting, which is you allow a dual license, there's only one dual license available within the city limits currently, and that would go to the medical marijuana facility out at Bash's. So I think we've got that surrounded a little bit, but certainly, that's a great question. And certainly, we want to make sure that we're controlling what happens with these facilities, so.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Is there also something in that law that limits the number of licenses? I thought I saw that there was like one license per 10 pharmacies or something of that.
Correct, that's in there. And I was trying to look to see if I could figure out how many pharmacies.
Do we even have 10 pharmacies?
That's, yeah, that's statewide, too. So I, I, I don't expect we would get anything else.
I, I, just from my understanding, we do have the, we already have the medical marijuana. I don't know if they're planning to go for a dual license, but if they do, that's kind of the establishment that I think that we'll have.
If, if we approve it the way I recommend, you're right, that would be the only.
I'll tell you what I'm more concerned about, truly, is the marketing, this has been brought to my attention by some of our citizens, the marketing of big billboards and everything close to our schools. And that's something that I understand has to be kind of handled at the state level. And that's something, go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry.
But regardless of where that's handled, if it can be handled locally or at state, that's an issue I think we do need to take up because as we speak, I think there are some billboards close to our schools that are all about where you can buy your marijuana.
Yeah, and I, we're not going to be able to do anything about that. The, the proposition does address the advertising and it allows for the advertising. The only thing that, that requi, that actually addresses maybe underage, is if this was targeted advertising, and I would say that would be by, you know, direct, you know, texting or something that they're trying to target a particular group or individual. They can't target youth. But the, the proposition does allow for, for them to advertise. They just need to, kind of like how political signs are out there, that you have to say who's doing it, they still have to, at least, which does make sense if you're trying to advertise it.
Well, I can tell you, our citizens are concerned about the marketing that's being done close to schools, close to our churches. And I think that's the area that I'm more concerned at this moment, that we find a way to target. Any other questions or comments about this? Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Yes, ma'am.
We go on. Finally, the department report on the adoption of the 2018 building codes and proposed amendments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, staff. Pretty dynamic evening, and I'm going to end the night with some code talk, so try not to be too riveting here. So anyway, this is a department report regarding the 2018 international code adoption and the proposed amendments to the Kingman Municipal Code. So, there we go. So plan moving forward, we hope to return to council on December 15th for formal adoption for a January 1st, 2021 implementation, implementation date. And also provide a six-month transition period to allow either the 2012, which is the current codes, to be used, or the 2012 codes to be used by the developers and our contractors. That's just, is a nice six-month smooth transition. We do anticipate that most, and we do have some in the queue, that are actually waiting for the adoption of the 2018 codes because they, they do provide some benefits. But that'll come with a mandatory implementation, implementation date of July 1st, 2021. All right, thank you. So the proposed codes, and I, I'm not going to read them all, there's just 10 2018 codes of the international family of codes that we adopt. There's, there's actually 14 codes, but we're, we're only proposing to adopt 10. And the standalone document, which is the National Electric Code, that's the 2017 version that integrates well with the 2018, that's published by the National Fire Protection Association. The good, the good news in, in, in Kingman and the, in the state of Arizona for that matter, is poised very well for code adoption. Just, just a little bit of code history. Out of the 50 states, only three states are allowed to adopt the code jurisdictional-wise. All the rest, the legis, state legislatures do it. And then they amend the codes for the state and they pass that code down to the municipalities and say, enforce this. And it doesn't really integrate well because demographically, we're all different. So in Arizona, we're allowed to vet the adoption of the particular codes and then tweak the codes based on how construction is done here and how demographically different we are. So it's a really, really nice opportunity and it provides a very good document for our customers. So public review and comment, we started the public outreach on October, August 31st, 2020. We did a 60-day comment period, which ended on October 31st. We met with several contractors to discuss the proposed changes. There weren't a lot of them overall. Out of the 10 documents in the National Electric Code, there was only 24 substantive amendments to the code. We received five comments, mainly questions. And we'll commence formal training, which is really my passion, is to, to get out and educate our customers on the significant changes to the code. But unfortunately, due to the pandemic, it's unlikely when that'll commence. But we're doing it via Zoom and phone calls right now. So council consideration, I, I sent you, you know, in the, in the packet, the proposed changes. They appear to be a lot, they're just ver, rather voluminous sections. So Article 1, Section 5.1 of the Kingman Municipal Code is just cleanup and add criteria for some grading permits. Article 1, Section 5.5 on the residential anti-displacement program, I reached out to City Attorney Cooper on this, and it's, it's really not needed as part of a CDBG initiative anymore, so we're going to delete that section out. Article 1, Section 5.8 is currently in the code, and we're just adding some finished floor elevation criteria that provides predictability for our contractors regarding their grading and drainage. Article 2, Section 5.16 are the actual building codes, the residential, the building, the international, existing buildings code and the energy code. The proposed local amendments to those code, codes. Article 3, Section 5.31 will be the electrical code, National Electric Code with proposed local amendments. Article 4, Section 5.61 will be the fuel gas code. Article 5, Section 5.76 will be the mechanical code. Article 6, Section 5.86 will be the pump, plumbing code. This had some substantial changes to it, really just taking portions out of the Kingman Municipal Code and integrating them in with now the, the code that was actually, became part of the 2018 family of codes, the International Pool Spa Code. We really heavily amended that section and we had pool barrier requirements. It's already in the code and it's already covered by state statutes, so we just reference those. Article 8, Section 5.111 is that swimming pool spa code that I, that I mentioned, and that contains a lot of the pool barrier requirements that were, that are currently in the Kingman Municipal Code. And Article 9, Section 5.121 is the fire code. The local amendments basically stay the same as written. So I've already covered the plan moving forward. And any questions?
Presentation was way better when you just got to that.
I was like, I thought I napped for a second there.
Any questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mayor Miles, thank you. Chris, I just want to, you haven't been here for a long time, but I've heard nothing but good things in the community about you. And I've had a couple of experiences where I've watched you work directly with business owners. And I want to just thank you for your approach. I've known a lot of planners, and there are those planners that will simply open the book and they'll say, well, here's what the book says, you have to do what the book says. But equally important is what's between the lines of what the book doesn't say. And, and having the discretion to sort of work through unique issues that maybe aren't specifically covered by a code and working with the business to actually make something work and move forward. And you've done that, and I want to thank you for that. It's something that Kingman has needed for a long time.
Well, I appreciate that. And, and you know, and I try to empower my employees to do the same thing. And one of the things I've said for years is the last place you should look for the answer is the code because that's what screws everything up. Use your innovation. Use your innovative common sense. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you so much, Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we still have all of our people here. Then we're going to have announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager, and Manager Foggan. I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few things I just want to cover with the council and everybody that is still tuned in. I just wanted to remind everybody that we are still planning a parade of lights. We're calling it a reverse parade, where people drive by and look at the displays down Beale Street. It's one of those COVID changes that, you know, maybe it catches on, maybe it doesn't, but we're still going to have that in a different form, but that will be December 5th, and it will run from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. 6:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Just a reminder to the council that we are going to have a special meeting on December 1st for the council transition and recognition of outgoing council members. That'll be at 4:30 December 1st. And then we have, oh, also, just a reminder, it was mentioned earlier in the meeting, but the shop local program, we are encouraging everybody to shop local, support our small businesses, and the shop local special program on the 28th of November. So please mark that down and go visit a small business. And then finally, out in the lobby, we have the Angel Tree tags for our senior Angel Tree giveaways, gifts, and would encourage everybody to take part in that. There are a number, a large number of tags, we'd love to get them out, especially this year where it's been hard on our seniors anyway, and I know that it would be appreciated. So that's my announcements, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Councilmember Nelson.
I have none, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wade.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to call this an announcement, but I just want, so as you know, this is mine and Travis's last business meeting, and I just wanted to say what a tremendous honor and privilege it has been for me to serve you guys, to serve the Eagles of Kingman. I am truly grateful for all of the sacrifices you've all made personally and for the blood, sweat, and tears you've put into all this, to make Kingman such a great place for me and my family to live. So I appreciate that, I'm going to miss you.
We're going to miss you, too. We need your lawyerly approach to interrogation, I mean questions. We will miss you. Thank you so much for all the years you've put in to helping make Kingman better, too. Counselor Mello Keener.
I have none, Mayor.
To Watkins.
I have none, sir.
Vice Mayor.
I'll, I get to retire for about a month next month, and I'll have my speech ready then, but don't forget to leave without your shirt tonight if you're on council, it would mean a lot to me, and I'll see you on the 1st, thanks.
Yes, you will. This really is, it's not goodbye totally, but thank you for all the work you've done. It has made such a huge difference. And for me, I will just, my announcements are, I did attend the Veterans Resource Team meeting last week, and the Veterans Villas are going to start, I think, this week, housing chronically homeless vets. That's the criteria they have to meet, and this has been something that's been worked on for several years, but it's coming to fruition now, and we are going to have veterans in housing, and I really appreciate that, and there are many ways to get those VASH vouchers, but the county housing department has them. I think you could be referred through JAVC, Jerry Ambrose, and it's just, it's just so a happy thing to know that our vets are going to have real options. And actually, Jerry Ambrose Veterans Council is also housing veterans at Roadway Inn right now. So, you know, if you have knowledge of veterans in need, these are organizations to contact because we are having options. We want zero, we want no homeless veterans in our city. Also, I attended the Northwest Attainment Meeting, or this was for the Steering Committee and the hubs, and again, these are meetings that are taking place to develop talent pipeline strategies for our city, and I'm proudly going to say that the new incoming councilwoman, Chair Samali, I'm going to rely on her to give those reports, because she's the lead for our Kingman hub. And I think a great collection of people are getting together to create great, good pathways for us. Also attending the Health Department meetings every week and other things, but this week I'm going to be attending the Arizona Tax Research Association Conference. Doesn't that sound exciting at 8 o'clock at night? But, oh, the agenda, it's just going to be so exciting. State budget outlook, state economic outlook, key tax issues. It's important, it's good information for us to have as we develop municipal policy. So that, and I will have the WACOG executive meeting. So I think, I think that can, oh, oh, one other thing, this is a happy thing, I wanted to end on this. You know, we get letters, sometimes we even get emails that people have something they're not happy about. Oh, it never happens. But this came in the mail, and I wanted to share. This is from the general manager of the Las Vegas Golf Club, Koi Wood, and he says, "Mayor Jen Miles, I wanted to thank you for the multi-use dog run. My wife and I drive to Phoenix on a monthly basis and always stop in Kingman to let our dogs out and have lunch. It is a treat to have a safe place to let our dogs out to run and to go to the bathroom. I have 160 acres of grass at Las Vegas National Golf Club to maintain, and I understand the problems and appreciate your maintenance department doing a great job at the park. Please let the city council and Parks and Rec know," Mr. Mayorzeman, "how much I appreciate everyone's extra efforts in maintaining a beautiful park for us to stop at, and the drinking fountain for us and our dogs is a plus." That just really made me smile, and because we know that that's something that's been added in the last year, year and a half, and it's nice to know that our people traveling through, as well as our residents, really appreciate these amenities. So please share that with your department, Mr. Mayorzeman. I see his name up there. Anyway, is it, are future agenda items? Are there any items that anyone would like to recommend for future reports and updates? At this time of night, no. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Give her a second.
I second it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is adjourned.